Sorry to begin so abruptly, but we don't have the normal intro for our council meetings. Want to welcome everybody to the July 23 meeting of Columbus City Council. Obviously, we're in kind of different territory for us, so we'll ask your patience in advance, because I'm not sure how to fly this thing. We're going to try to get all the mics on the way we're supposed to and make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak up, but it may, we may stumble a little bit. I will tell you that we're making a little bit of an exception. Typically, we do not allow more people than we have seats, but I know there's some folks who are very passionate about some of the issues tonight. We want you to be present in here to speak up, so we are gonna, we're gonna allow everybody to stay in here, even the excess folks that are standing, as long as we keep it civil. We have to respect one another and make sure that we are able to try to, try to listen and actually hear what one another says, and I thank you in advance for that as well. We are gonna begin this meeting as we begin all of our council meetings, and that's by asking for God's presence and sovereignty over these proceedings. So I'm gonna invite to the podium down here Ms. Carol Collins of International Friendship Ministries Incorporated of Columbus, Georgia. And Carol, if you would, push the button and let me see if I can figure out how to get your microphone turned on. Okay, I think, I think I got you. Let's see if I can figure out how to do it.
My own.
There you go.
Well, I'm embarrassed to say this is my very first council meeting, and I have no idea of what the protocol is for a devotional, so I can just do my own thing. Is that all right?
Yes, ma'am.
But Jeremiah 29:7 says, "Seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have taken you, because if it prospers, you too will prosper." So in looking at some of you, I know a lot of things on your mind, and one thing that came to my mind is Psalms 50, which says, "God knows every bird in the mountains; all the cattle of a thousand hills belong to Him, and all the beasts in the forest are His." So He cares about animals, and He cares about each one of us especially. I'll share just a few of my favorite thoughts. Psalms 139 says that He saw us before we were born. He foresaw our days. Verse 16 says He is thinking about us all the time. There's more in His thoughts of us are more in number than the grains of sand on every shore. And Matthew 10:30 says He knows us so well that He knows even the number of hairs on our head, and that's constantly changing, so He is constantly thinking about us. And, and it also says that He doesn't want us to worry about anything, 1 Peter 5:7, but to cast all of our care upon Him. But He says, "You are precious in My sight," and that's the thought that was on my mind today, is that each one of us here are precious in His sight. And Psalms 103 says, "As high as the heavens are above the earth, so great is His love for those who fear Him." So He loves us, and He's thinking about us, and He's very present in our midst. I love the diversity of this group. So let's pray together. Father, I want to thank You for the privilege of being here. We thank You for the privilege of praying in a city council meeting. We do, Lord, You know each one of us. We ask Your blessing on this meeting. We, I ask that You have each one of us cast all of our cares upon You. You said, "If anyone lacked wisdom, let him ask of God," James 1:5, "and that You give it generously to all without obreating." So Father, we ask for wisdom to be given today. You said, "The joy of the Lord is our strength." I want to ask that You just refresh the heart of every person here, that You lift their burdens, that You let a peace that passes understanding come over them, guard their hearts. We pray for our council, for Your blessing, Your guidance. Give them strength, bless their families. And Father, we pray for our city. Thank You for letting us live in this wonderful city. Lord, guard our city, protect our city. Let us all love one another, Lord. Let Your blessing be here in our midst, and I ask this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Carol, thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your words, and thank you for being willing to be here this evening. Next, if you would, those of you that aren't already, please stand, and we'll salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first order of business tonight is to approve the minutes from the July 9 meeting. There's a motion and a second to do so. Any edits or anything anybody would like to change in the minute? Hearing none. All the, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, they are passed. And before we move to the city attorney's agenda, I'm gonna take a point of personal privilege. I've heard from Counselor Tucker and Counselor Thomas about moving a couple of things up, so I ask you to be patient. We're gonna bring a few items up early, because I know they have a lot of folks here with them. The first is, I want to bring up the Deltas to the podium. They, they, I'm gonna let them gather. We have had a request from the Deltas to forward to the Board of Honor the possibility of a name change of Carver Park in honor of Evelyn Turner Pugh. And so we're gonna go through that. I've got, let's see. All right, Madam Clerk, if you would.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. The first item is a resolution approving the honorary designation application submitted by the Columbus, Georgia Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., to rename Carver Park in honor of former Mayor Pro Tem Evelyn Turner Pugh.
There's a motion and a second to approve the honorary designation. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't want to take your time, so thank you, Mayor, for having us here. I'm Brenda Williams, the president of Columbus, Georgia Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, and on the behalf of a 333, 333-strong membership, we thank you and the city council for looking at our dear soror, Evelyn Turner Pugh, and giving her this honor. She served this city for over 31 years and did a lot for District 4 and the city of Columbus as a whole, and we appreciate you taking this into consideration.
Well, thank you. We want to thank the Deltas for initiating this. It is certainly, it's certainly a fitting honor for Evelyn. She was, she was a true stateswoman. She did an amazing job and has left her fingerprints all over this community, particularly around Carver Park and Forest Road.
Yes.
And so thank y'all for putting this through the line.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Item two on the Clerk's agenda is a resolution approving an honorary designation signage at Double Church's Pool in honor of Ms. Joanie Rasmeyer.
I saw Scott here. Scott, you want to come forward, please, sir? Scott, Dr. Brown, if you want to come forward too, sir, at the request of Counselor Thomas?
He thought he was gonna get to sit up there and not bring it.
Mr. Mayor, we can get a motion and a second to approve it.
All right, there is a motion, second. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am. I'm trying to find, I'm gonna shut everybody off and start over again.
Oh, look, now mine's on. I can say what I wanted to say. Mine wouldn't come on when you all were up.
Mr. Mayor, Dr. Brown came to me a couple of, a month or so ago and said that one of the people who had contributed so heavily to the children in Columbus was Mrs. Rasmeyer, Scott's mom, and he wanted me to take a look at naming a pool or something after her so that generations to come would know what she had done. He estimated that there are thousands of kids in Columbus who know how to swim because of Ms. Joanie, and so we did that. We sent it to the Board of Honor, and they have said, "We'll put a plaque up with the proper flourish and so forth, English in it, to honor her and to honor the great gift that she gave to the kids of Columbus and thereby gave to the adults and everybody around." I thank Dr. Brown for bringing this to me, and I thank Scott for letting me take it on forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
It's my turn?
Your turn.
Well, I probably could ask this crowd in here, how many of you actually took swimming lessons from my mom, or how many of you actually had kids that came and had swimming lessons from my mom? But, you know, we live in the South and therefore we're always around water, and she made it her mission to help kids not drown. And she started doing that when a good friend of hers' child fell in the pool and drowned. And for 50 years, that was her mission, and she literally has taught thousands and thousands and thousands of kids to swim. She maybe just saved one life, but those 50 years that she taught swimming, that one life was well worth saving. Thank you for giving her that designation and letting her legacy live on there at the pool.
Thank you, Scott. We have not, all right, there's a motion, second, to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I spoke with Maurice Turner, Evelyn's son, before council started, and he just felt kind of bad, because he doesn't get off of work until 7:00 PM, but he said to tell you all, "Thank you, and please do not forget to reach out to him when you all do the ribbon cutting. Also, don't forget to talk to Pastor Valerie Thompson and her Revelation family, because they would definitely want to be there as well." But thank you all for just keeping Evelyn in your thoughts and doing this, this for Evelyn. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Next is the city attorney's agenda. Ms. City Attorney? Which one you are?
There we go. All right, thank you, Mayor. Do have several business items to cover. The first one up is rezoning at 1953 7th Avenue. Had a lot of discussion last time, and I think Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion to delay. The applicant's attorney is here tonight, if there are any other questions, but...
Yeah, Counselor Kogle?
Yeah, I was just, I think I just pushed the button faster, so, but I was gonna make a motion to delay for 30 days so we can have adequate discussion with the neighborhood.
All right, motion, second, for 30-day delay. Any comments to the motion? Counselor Huff? Where'd you go? Hang on a minute, find who you are. Did you push the button, turn the green? There we go.
Yeah, I had, the city attorney, I had a question. On this, if, after the meetings, if they decide that something else can go there besides what's on the schedule now, is there a method of having an exception where they don't have to go back through the whole process again to put a different type of deal on that property?
Well, we've had a couple of versions floated that would limit the uses. It had the same conditions on lighting and buffers, but what we'll do is just bring it back on first reading in 30 days, and hopefully they can have some discussion and agree on one version to put on the table, but...
Yeah, I had a discussion in the last couple of weeks in reference to it being something other than gas station convenience sales.
Right.
And my question is, would they, could we do it in such a manner so they don't have to go back through the entire process again, to planning and all of that?
Yes, sir, it'll come back here in 30 days, and we'll put it back on first reading. If there's an agreement to have a new condition, number one, that says no convenience store with or without gas sales, then we'll bring it back like that on first reading, but they don't have to go back to pack.
Okay, and also, is that possible to do with the exception to the zoning piece without it going straight to GC? Could it stay RO with an exception for this project? It has to go to GC? What I'm asking is, if it goes to GC, once it goes to GC and we put exception and get this done, it opens up that whole area for GC for the future, that's what I'm asking?
Well, I believe that their ultimate aim is something similar to a restaurant use, and if that requires something other than GC, then it's gonna take another amendment, so.
Okay, okay, okay.
We'll let them talk the planning in the meantime.
Okay, I request Counselor Kogle, and Mayor Pro Tem, if you would, include me in the meetings, because I had a few conversations where I understand development needs to take place, but to some of the people I spoke with, they were just interested in not having gas sales, alcohol on the property because of what they're doing in the area. Okay, thanks.
All right. Okay, we'll bring that back, Mayor, in 30 days, probably in a different form on first reading.
For the delay? All right, we've got Counselor Tucker. Hang on. There we go.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney, if we approve it, can it revert back to the original zoning? If it's so, can, would that be possible?
No, ma'am. If you approve it, general commercial with certain conditions, like no convenience store use, then the only way that can be changed is to come back and amend those conditions or amend the main category of general commercial. So it won't revert to anything. It'll have conditions that you set, and then later on down the road, if somebody wants to change those conditions, they have to go through a rezoning to amend it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, we have a motion, second, for a 30, 30-day delay. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's delayed.
Okay, now, item two on the foreclosure of lanes, I think Counselor Garrett wants to delay that also, 30 days.
All right, there is a motion, a second, to delay for 30 days. Any comments to the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is delayed.
All right, next item up for a vote is the parking management districts, including the new Civic Center district and other minor amendments. That's ready for a vote.
Motion, second, approve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, that's approved.
All right, the next item, Mayor, is a zoning hearing for 8877 Veterans Parkway. I believe that there have been several conditions added to the ordinance at the request of Counselor Davis, which is fine. Now's the time to have those all on the table, but we can have discussion and see if the applicant's here and see if there's any opposition. An applicant here? All right, so we have McBride and Maxey representative here. Any questions around the table?
I don't see any. Are there any questions from the counselors? Okay. Let me...
Counselor?
Your light isn't, turn it on. There you go. Well, try that. There we go.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, just a couple of comments real quick. It was just a pleasure working with the applicant and the seller of the land. It always is great when you can sit down and work things out at the table, and it was very, 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 very pleasant interaction, very productive, and I just want to thank you, Mr. Maxey. I think Locksme, Karthnik was involved, I think I got that right, and Leah Braxton and others. Just your willingness to, to work together was, was very meaningful to me, and working together to find a good compromise that would work for the area. I really appreciate that. It makes my job easy, and I just wanted to make that statement, so really, really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you, sir, for being here. Anybody in the audience that wants to be heard on this, for or against? This is a Wade-Maxey petition. Got some hands back here, Mayor.
Yes, sir, if you want to come to the podium, please, sir, and give your name and address and make your comments.
Technically, we're in District 6, right across the street from this property, at 8880, 8866 and 8850 Veterans Parkway. My first concern is my lack of ability to navigate the Trello site. I was unable to pull up the ordinances as they were presented to the city attorney, so I don't have any knowledge of those. I don't know what's been added. I don't know if I can have that available to me. The, that's, that's, that would be useful information for me. As far as the, as far as the rezoning application, it appears to be not consistent with the land use there. The Advisory Commission staff report says that it was inconsistent with plan in Area A. The current designation and the future land use designation currently vacant and future single-family residential. And then it says compatible with existing land uses, and it's just a short answer of yes, which seems to be contradictory to the second item as far as single-family residential. General commercial can mean a lot of things. That's a, that's a concern for us. That's a concern for some of the other neighbors around in the area, and we, first of all, we didn't even get the letters mailed out to us before the first meeting, and by the time we went to the, when we found out about the first meeting, we didn't get an update. We got them like two days before the proposed meeting, and we get, when we get to this meeting, and it's been postponed, and we had no way knowing that. So we've been through this once already, you know, without having the knowledge of what was going on. I understand things get postponed for whatever reason, but at least part of the reasons that appear to be from, I think it said July the 16th or 17th was the ordinances, and I have absolutely zero information on that and would certainly like some to pursue this further.
Hit your light one more time. Counselor, Mayor Pro Tem Allen?
Thank you. Ms. McQuag, I appreciate you being here. The, the additions to the petition, to the ordinance change, address for, are addressed for all the area. The notices are only sent out within a certain distance of the property, and you may be aware of that. I think it's 300 feet. Is that, is that right, Mr. Johnson?
Well, we're across a, currently of, you know, two-lane highway from it, literally directly across the street.
Right, right, I understand that, but that's the way the ordinance reads, is we send out notices to all property owners within 300 feet.
But I'm not sure if that's the, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I'm not sure if that's the ordinances I'm confused about. It says on July the 16th there or about, I did, I was able to read in the notes that changes to the ordinances were sent to the city's attorney's office, and, and I'm not sure if an ordinance in this case means coming before council and discussing things, or if it means new laws or restrictions are gonna be added to the property. I'm not sure what that means.
That's exactly what it means. The, the property is being conditioned with the, Counselor Davis and I met and talked about the property, and what we wanted, since veterans is a border of our two council districts, and we wanted to mirror the conditions so that the development along the corridor would be identical, would be the same, and protect all the homeowners in the area and all the existing businesses in the area, but yet provide opportunity for someone to develop a piece of property. And that's what, that's what they did. The conditions are there to protect everybody around it.
So basically, to just merge the two districts along that route in that close proximity to that project?
Well, what we did was we added, we added conditions that, for example, general commercial allows a wide latitude of operations, and we, we drew that down to, to not allow certain things that are undesirable, in our opinion. And there's a list of them there you can look at, but anyway, that's, that's what, that's what happened. Those are the conditions that are there to protect the neighborhood.
And, and I would say that, you know, if I'm able to look at those, I'm sure that my thoughts in general probably member, mirror y'all's as far as what's acceptable and what's But there again, I haven't, I haven't actually seen it. Generally, I'm not opposed to a commercial development along the route. I am concerned now that commercial development on that, on that section, maybe more than 300 feet, but on Veterans Parkway, north or south, probably a half a mile in either direction, seems to be spotty. Some of it unused, some of it what I would call, what I would call non-traffic generators, maybe storage facilities, former fence business, things like that, but nonetheless, the properties are still commercial.
Well, just, just so you'll understand, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to read out... Well, just, just so you'll understand, I'm, I'm going to ask the city attorney to read out the conditions, and it, it's not a real long list, I won't take but a minute.
Okay.
Yeah, let, let's get them on the record. Mayor Protim, that's a good idea. The planning director is also going to give Mr. McQuag a copy, but it's on the city website. It says, "The above described property is rezoned with the following conditions. One, the following uses should be prohibited uses unless specifically approved by the Columbus Council. Adult entertainment, amusement park, assembly hall, auto truck broker, bars and lounges, boat, trailer, and marine sales, check cashing offices, club or lodge, convenience store, no gas sale, convenience store with gas sale, cultural facility, flea market, fuel station, funeral home, group foster home, mobile home sales, pawn shop, package and liquor store, boutique wine and beer acceptable, shelter, taxidermy, transitional housing, transient lodging, theater, outdoor, wireless communication facility, vape and smoke shop." Those are all prohibited uses. And condition two says, "The following use, uses are restricted to the back west side of the parcel. Auto vehicle and truck storage, building and construction trades, and utility, minor or major." And that's what's on the table now.
Okay, I, I, he did provide me with a list, and, and I, I understand what the term ordinance means in this case now. Okay, so that's, that's fine. As far as the commercial development, I have no existing opposition to commercial development. I work in the progress business myself. But I am concerned about ingress and egress to this commercial facility that appears to envelop on either side the only ingress and egress we have to about twenty-nine acres with three houses on it across the street. Again, that address where that driveway is, is eighty-eight eighty Veterans Parkway. I know we're going to have a, a four-lane road with a flat lane in the middle. I'm not sure if that's a turning lane, or if it's an out-of-access lane, I, I don't know. But I, we have about twenty-two ins and outs on that driveway every single day, amongst those three houses and the families that live there. And I've been through this with the construction crews that are going on that want to continue to block our driveway on a daily basis, so I'm familiar with that. But anyway, we, we do use it. It's not just a piece of, of property out in the woods somewhere with a driveway and a gate where somebody comes to it every now and then. It's used on a daily basis, and we're concerned about the, the drives that y'all show for access to this property appear to be acceptable. The one on the north side is pretty close. Our driveway's about a hundred and fifty feet north of the creek. That one looks like it's about three hundred or so feet north of the creek. The, the access to the south side of the creek doesn't appear to have any effect on us at all. We're not concerned with that. But my only concern with this is, I know things are subject to change, are these driveways subject to change? Is this ingress and egress to this development subject to change?
The engineering department will set the scale for where the, the driveway will be located.
Okay.
I mean, they, we don't do that, that's the...
So this map is not relevant at all then?
If you don't mind, let me ask Mr. Johnson to comment on that for you.
Okay.
Clarify a little bit.
Yes, sir, this is a GDOT road. They are aware of this rezoning, and then once this is all finalized, they will establish ingress and egress.
State?
The state.
The state, okay.
So he can change market, marketably from where it is now? Is that the case, or?
They're going to determine the safest place to have ingress and egress.
Is that safe for y'all, or safe for everybody, or for us?
Safe for everybody. Everybody.
Because if we wind up with a ingress, egress right across the street from where we are, then we're going to basically lose access to our property. Because depending on what goes there, depending on the amount of business they do, the land is going to be full of cars turning and coming out nearly at all times. And I would also like to point out, I would also like to point out that on that piece of property, it's basically, for all intents and purposes, it's basically two pieces of property. One has a, a road that does not appear to be any problem for us whatsoever. But the northern piece of the property where the most buildings are depicted, now I understand that those buildings might not come to be in the, in the form that they're shown now. But if they do, and that driveway moves, or that access moves to in front of our driveway, then we're going to be in trouble. You know, we're, we just, it's just a major concern for us. And I would like, I would like for, you know, both of the adjoining council members to consider, consider that, and anybody else that has voting access to this project to, to consider it as well. We're worried about, we're worried about what we can do, and that's, that's pretty much it. I don't see our property ever going anything other than what it is right now. It's a family estate with multiple houses on it. But who knows in the future? If it goes to, you know, if, if somebody wants to access it and convert it to commercial property, you know, are we going to be part of the same agreement between the two council districts on either side as far as, you know, allowing certain things to go on? Or, or is it going to wind up being a spotty commercial district like it looks like now? So, and I realize this is just the early prospects for what's going to be going on in that area. And I know there's probably going to be a lot more of it. But, you know, we, we deal with things that we can see, and this is the thing that I can see. So my primary concern is although I do not per se oppose the development, I am genuinely and with good reason concerned about the access to that north piece of property.
All right, thank you, Mr. McQuag. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I just want to add a few points to this. Number one, and those are all good questions and good concerns. Counselor Allen, Allen and I got together on this and sat down with the staff, and we were really concerned about where we draw the boundaries. Our concern in sharing this is as our city starts pushing further, further north, where do we draw the boundaries between development and residential development? That was the conversation we had. We were really concerned about this piece of property, and because it's challenging, like you mentioned, the, there's limitations as far as neighborhood commercial things of that nature and what they were trying to accomplish there. And that's how we came up with this list of what would be acceptable. Veterans Parkway is an overlay district, I don't know if you know that or not, but it is an overlay district, and they have to meet requirements of the overlay district. They're very stringent, whether it's architectural designs and standards, or building standards and designs, materials, things of that nature. Ingress, egress, parking lots, the flow, those kind of things. All that, we worked out many years ago with the overlay district in that area. Counselor Allen and I were very concerned in, in the beginning about that use of that land, but then when you really look at it, it's, it's very confined, like I said, and, and has many, many challenges to the point that what couldn't you do on that land? You can't really do a lot of residential when you really look at it, when you start piecing it all together, maybe behind it some of the larger pieces of land. But the line of development is coming that way. And we told them very specifically, and where we stand on this is at Pierce Chapel. Pierce Chapel, we made a sign, a line in the sand, so to speak, that, that's it. Beyond that, we're not doing general commercial. Don't bring us general commercial, we need residential. And we need large...
You mean, you mean north of Pierce Chapel?
Large acreage. Now, we know across the street, I think next to you, I think the Methodist Church or the Methodist organization has a, has a plan to build a, a development there, a, a senior...
Well, that's also Harris County, just a few short feet north of Pierce Chapel.
It runs out that way. So we are concerned about protecting the neighborhood and the character of the community and the residential side, large acre lots. But in that area there, you can see that the path of progress is coming that area, coming that way. So what we did was, was come up with an agreement with these conditions of how it can be used. I think it's going to be a very, very well-put development that's put together. As far as the questions you asked about ingress, egress, and curb cuts and things, the, the property owners are entitled to that by law. They're going to, they, they have to have curb cuts, and the GDOT will provide that. We have no say-so in that. We don't even know if they're going to put mediums in. We don't know if it becomes a, an issue of a medium and a traffic hazard, they may require lights. But that's subject to, the developer would have to absorb all those costs, not the city nor the GDOT. Right now, I don't think that's planned. But there's still steps that have to be taken from the engineering standpoint. Well, we're asked if, how that land can be used, subject to the limitations here. And that's why I said I thought this was a great compromise for the area, but at the same time, we both agree that don't bring us any more general commercial, because that's a very concern of ours as we push further away from the heart of our community, just moving Columbus further north. We don't want that, we want to bring development back to the core of our city, and the growth back to our city. So we do need a lot of residential. It mirrored a lot of the concerns that the people out of Midland have about large acre lots, and that's kind of where we stand. I just wanted to add that to it, I don't know if it helps you or not.
Well, I believe that the DOT and curb cuts, and whether or not you get turning lanes and lights, depends on the traffic that the uses that are not on this list generate. And obviously, grocery stores going, generate a, a ton more movement than a doctor's office. And I'm not even sure if that's, you know, part of the consideration for. So what, what they can actually put on that piece of property is going to determine what the DOT decides to do with the road out there.
That's right.
So basically, you're saying we'd be unprotected in the, you know, by the hands of the city of Columbus. We wouldn't have any recourse, we'd have to go straight to deal with the state.
That's one way you can look at it, but I, I think the DOT, we don't have any authority, that's what we're trying to say. We have no authority...
I realize that, you just said that, that's clear.
Right, they will make the decisions on that, and I'm sure that they'll take everybody into consideration. We've worked with them for a long time, and they've always done that. And I'm sure that, I'm not sure, Mayor, if they have public meetings with the DOT on those kind of issues? I don't think so, but that highway's already been drawn.
I got, I got the prints to it, I study it every day. I know exactly, I can tell you where it's going.
Right.
But that's, that's not the point. The point is, is, is how long are we going to be a, a neighborhood, or a, or a residence there with one, one road in, in and out? And the, the DOT, by the way, wouldn't give us, wouldn't give us cuts for the two pieces, the, two of the three pieces of property. We only have one cut through one piece of property that shares an easement with the other two. And even though they're all McQuag property, they're still three separate pieces of property. So we, we couldn't get that from them, but yet they turn and give, or y'all did, or the DOT or somebody, gave Dave Erickson ingress and egress to Charleston Place in less than the six-hundred-foot distance required by law when y'all, when y'all did that. I mean, you made a change for him to, you know, as, as far as being near existing driveways and whatnot, and, and y'all closed the six-hundred-foot requirement. So, but y'all did that. Now, can you tell me why the DOT wasn't involved in that?
Are you talking about Woolworth's Road?
No, I'm talking about Charleston Place on Veterans Parkway directly south of this development.
Right.
On the other side of the road. So, I mean, you can understand my dilemma when you tell me that y'all can't make any guarantees for this. The DOT will have to do it, and then I have no recourse from them. But yet, it seems that y'all have taken this to light before. And it didn't appear that the DOT had any input, or if they did, they rubber-stamped it, and he got his, you know, hundred houses back there.
A little bit, I, we hear your concerns. I, there is a process, the engineers will be involved. I don't know what that is, and I don't have any authority, nor does this body. I'm sure they'll discuss it, I'm sure they'll look at all those angles, but that's something to be determined later. We don't, we don't deal with that, it doesn't come to us. We can only deal with what's being proposed. So, you know, I, I understand your concern. Right now, the way I look at it is the road is already designed, and that's it. What you see is what you're getting. I don't know of any curb cuts, I don't know of any lights that will be in there, but it comes...
Well, there's going to be two on this project. I mean, there's going to be two on this project across the street somewhere. I mean, and neither one of them are depicted where the current curb cuts for that property is now. So, as they're depicted, they're not even close to where the curb, the current curb cuts for that property is located, that could change.
Normally, the way it works is that the engineering department will get with the DOT, and they'll work all that out. The requests will be made, like I said, the developers have rights, landowners have rights, you have rights. You may sell your land to Dave Erickson or others, it may happen.
Thirty-five, thirty-five years, it ain't likely, that's how long we've been there.
I'm just saying, but that's what happened in this case too, that they weren't prepared to sell their land either. And so they've been put in this situation, and we understand that. But all we can deal with is what is before us, and, and, you know, I'm sensitive to your concerns and what you're saying, but I'm trying to give you also the process and how it works. And I'm sure that if there's a discussion with DOT, if there are changes, they will understand those concerns, and there'll be a, "Mr. Johnson, is there a time to have public input with the DOT if they make changes? Or do they just do that on their own will and nature because they control that right away?"
They're engineers, they do what they deem best, and there's not a lot of debate about it.
I, I would like to, I, I, I pretty much got the information that I need. I would like to address one statement that you said just a few moments ago. Don't bring us any more commercial developments for this area. So if I determine in the next, I don't know, five or ten years, that the twenty-eight acres that we're sitting on becomes available for commercial development, you're telling me that's off the table before we ever even get here?
North of...
North of Pierce Chapel.
Okay. All right. Well, that's pretty interesting, because there's not any room north of Pierce Chapel, on the east side of the road, only the west side.
Mr. McQuag, I'll tell you too, that you got the two district councilors that are pretty firm in the fact that they don't want any more commercial going that far, but it still has to go through the process. If somebody did want to buck that, they could still come and come before the council, go before the PAC and, and our, our planning division. And fifteen years from now, there may be an entirely different flavor for something like that. So just to be clear, if you have something you want to bring, you bring it. But I think we've sort of covered, we've gone full circle.
In, in summary, I'm not opposed to the development, not opposed to things like that in general. I am concerned about where it leaves us with our own access. That, that's the short nuts and bolts of the whole thing, right there.
Yes, sir.
Everything else I see in here obviously can be overcome.
Yes.
At some point down the road with a, with a meeting or anything like that, so. But I certainly appreciate the time, I'm sorry to take up so much of yours, and, but I am most appreciative.
Thank you, Mr. McQuag.
Thank you.
Public hearing, right?
Yes, ma'am, state your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Teresa LME, two-eight-two-two Shaw Street, District Three. Residential to commercial, no, no, no. This unmanaged commercial growth is out of control. Somebody needs to get control of this road here. You might as well put a big sign, "Investors, come on down, Columbus is for sale." When I Googled that address, eighty-eight seven seven Veterans Parkway, I saw nothing but trees, forest-like vegetation. Frankly, I rarely go past Bee Merrell's. Frankly, I rarely go past Bee Merrill's, but I decided to drive to the address. Couldn't believe my eyes. Good people, it's a fatal complete. It's a done deal. There's so much commercial construction and the stuff down that road where it was nothing, nothing. A few months ago, Big Publics. I didn't even know a Big Publics was down that way. This commercial growth is out of control and folks, it's not funny. Because this consolidated government 50 years ago, coming together, it was to suppress the black vote and nothing else, not for economic development. I have never, and I lived a lot of places. I'm from Atlanta. There is so much undeveloped land in this city that's almost 200 years old. What y'all been doing for 200 years? You drive down Mountain, big sign, 5.8 acres. It's like on the main streets. You got so much undeveloped land in this city. You know, a lawyer said in 2012, I thought he was being sexist. He said, they don't know how to run a city, Ms. Alameen. Well, I'm beginning to believe that because we need affordable housing. So residential to commercial, no, no, no. You need to get with the housing authority and hear how bad it is on affordable housing. That 5.8 acres on Mountain, prime, prime for building some affordable housing. You know what? When you sell us out, you know, it's not a good thing. 13579 in the mayor's office, 2026, right around the corner. I drove down Veteran, whole bunch of apartments down there. I was thinking about moving down there. It's nothing but commercial. It's like they moving the dirt around already. I think at this very address, it's a fatal complete. It's a done deal. I wanted to tell those Rose Hill people at the last meeting when they up there pleading and pleading.
Ms. Alameen, we need to stick to that particular property.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But you know what?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, on July 9th, when Mr. Mayor Protem was making amendments on the first reading, and you basically told me to shut up, that you have all the rights and you don't need to hear from the citizens. Before one citizen said a word, you're already amending the ordinance for a smooth passage. That's what goes on up in here. As my mother would say, wake up and smell the coffee, good people. Commercial growth is out of control in Columbus. Somebody needs to get a handle on this thing. Seriously.
Thank you. Thank you. Either, anything else?
Counselor Thomas, do you have a question or a comment? You good? Okay.
I think we're good.
All right. If there are no other hands, Mayor, we will bring that back, um, first regular meeting in August.
Okay.
Next zoning hearing is for property 2601 Cortland Avenue, 6250, 6214 Forest Road. Wiser Homes, George Woodruff Company Development, recommended approval requesting single-family four, going from three to four. The petitioner here, Mr. Johnson's here.
Well, that, that's a good question. Um, either, is anybody here for Wiser Homes?
She's right here.
Teresa, there, come on up.
I'm actually Kathy Long, representing Wiser Homes.
Okay, tell them what your proposal is for the property, ma'am.
Uh, we're going from 60-foot lots to 50-foot. Um, just trying to get affordable housing. The lot cost will come down and benefit the end user, the purchaser, by $6,000 to $7,000 per lot, per house.
All right. Are there any, any questions around the council table?
Okay. The other, other gentleman, would you like to comment?
No, sir.
Okay. All together. Anybody else in the audience wanna be heard on the petition, Wiser Homes and Woodruff Company, George Woodruff Company? I don't see any others, Mayor.
All right.
We'll bring that back, uh, first regular meeting in August. Got one more? Give him your name and address, please, sir.
My name is, uh, Chris Walker. My wife, Maria Walker. We're at, uh, 2400 Lemongrass Way. Oh, 2400 Lemongrass Way. So we're over here. This is my first time being part of the rezoning. So we're trying to find out exactly what's going on. The gentleman that's in, I don't think he's here, that's, uh, trying to redevelop the land came and talked to us about how they doing. We're, uh, concerned that the houses that he's gonna build, which is, uh, one level, may bring down the value of our homes and raise the value of those. So we're trying to figure out, is that gonna be that or is it gonna be something else?
Counselor Tucker.
Well, you can respond.
We are initially coming in with one-story houses. We are trying to keep the housing as affordable.
Come close to, to the mic.
Is the mic not on?
Pull it down.
Uh, we are doing one-story homes and we are trying to keep the housing affordable. Um, it's, they were, there are some two-story homes that were built previously that are larger, but at the time, the interest rates were lower. Housing was a little lower. So we're trying to get the product affordable for that area, just to bring in families in that area.
Um, one of my concerns, and we actually had the meeting at Revelation Baptist Church, I think, earlier this month, or was it the end of last month? I can't remember. Um, but the integrity of the community, because that community right there has two-story homes, probably close to the 2,500, 3,000 square foot, um, larger lots. And reducing a lot, um, size and also the homes. And I know when we had that meeting, one of the things that I really wanted to emphasize was just the aesthetics of the homes that's going into that community. Because really jamming in a lot of homes versus what they have already there. You know, just thinking about those residents, it's a lot of, you know, retirees, military individuals that purchased those lots over there thinking that that would be the standard for that community. So that was the reason why I had called that meeting. Um, and I think your price point for those homes are close to 200,000?
240, we're looking at 240 initially to 260, just to get the affordable pricing of the homes in that area.
So, once they presented that information, it probably would keep, you know, your homes probably are in the 300-plus far as assessed value now. But it wouldn't bring it super down because those homes, just due to the fact that homes are, are costing way more.
Exactly.
For way, for, yeah. And, and we got a real estate, you know, mogul over here.
Yes, she did.
Two, two of them, you know. But that was one of the things that we addressed in the meeting. Um, but if you all want to have a further conversation, that way you can see the plans. Um, 'cause one of the concerns I also had when we had the meeting was due to the one-card system that we have far as, you know, the trash pickup, will it be issues with spacing? You know, far as smaller, um, roads, that was one of the issues. You know, that was a concern from the residents in that area. But I think if you could just link up with this individual and then we can kinda meet with those, those neighbors in that community. That way we can, you know.
That'll be fine. I mean.
Concern of all of us. We had a little, you know, a meeting of our own and one of, one of the other concerns was is we don't know if that's gonna be a HOA. And if it is, is that gonna just start from where you guys start the building or that gonna include us in that? And we really don't want no HOA. We're doing fine like we're doing right now. If that's the case, for, for, they gonna do it, do it them and not try to bring us into that. And then again, like the housing, you know, they're gonna be smaller and more close together. How is that gonna work there?
Yeah. But I think.
And made a comment, we definitely wanna have a meeting and I'll go back to the gentleman.
And I think Mr. Erickson would mind meeting again and we can kinda just meet in the neighborhood, just have a smaller neighborhood meeting if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It is. It is.
So, okay.
All right.
That's fine. If you can just contact us.
Can you leave your card with the clerk? That way I can get in the conference with you.
And who do I need to leave it with?
Right here.
Okay.
With our clerk.
All right.
Lancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor, uh, Counselor Huff?
Yes.
Your turn.
Okay. There we go. Uh, we got two real estate people down here that own the council that can help me with this. Uh, I bought a home back in the eighties. Mm-hmm. And the builder forgot to move it to a certain price point in the neighborhood. And he came back and he spent his own money in the closing to bring it up to the price point so it wouldn't bring the value of the homes down in the area. So my question is, when you take it down, what'd you tell me, 10 square feet or whatever? What, what's, what's your number? You said from 50 to 60, 60 to 50 or something? There's a number.
Well, we were talking 240 to 260 as far as the end, the price.
Right. I mean, the lot sizes, you said something.
The lot size is 50 wide.
50 wide. So it's going from 60 to 50?
Correct.
Okay. So does that not affect them overall, real estate people, when they have houses being built in the neighborhood? Because when they do the, do the, I don't know the terminology, real estate.
They're not comparables.
They're not comparables?
No. You wouldn't use the smaller homes as comparables for the larger ones.
Larger homes.
Okay. But that doesn't affect the neighborhood?
Well, you have example of Sonoma Point.
Turn your light on.
I mean, I'm, I'm just asking. I'm just asking 'cause I know where they're coming from because I've been there once before in life. And at my point in life now, I'm the same way. I'm sitting down looking, trying to see what's coming around me. Because at this late date, I'm not buying a new home. So I'm stuck. If it, if it goes, if it goes south, you know, it goes wrong, you're just stuck with it.
Well, typically, a one-story and a two-story won't be, uh, comparable to the other.
Okay.
So the two stories would lean on the other two stories in the area to be the comparables.
Okay. So in the comparables being equal, uh, one story to one story, two story to two story?
Correct.
Okay. So, in the long run, you're telling me it does not affect the two-story homes at all down the road?
Uh, in, in general, I would say no. Um, that's not typically what the agent would use to compare.
Okay. I'm just, you know, some people want, at late date, may wanna sell. They may wanna downsize. Uh, I'm just asking. This is, this is interesting to me because.
We have mixed, we have mixed neighborhoods throughout Columbus. Sonoma Point's one where they have the smaller homes and then they have the larger two-story homes. And then they added townhouses. And then even Maple Ridge, you have different sized houses within Maple Ridge. It, it's, it creates a diversity that it's, you don't have
Trouble.
Cookie cutter, like cookie cutter neighborhoods.
Yeah. But I thought when the developer goes in, he sets a plan for size of lots and things to build homes.
And that's why you have like in a subdivision, you'll have section one and then section two. They, they start in one area and then they break open and go into another area. And the next area may have different, uh, different housing. The, the housing market has changed and the cost to build is, is higher. We're running out of land. So that's probably why they're wanting to do what they're doing because I don't know what the gentleman bought his house for. But these smaller houses are probably gonna sell about the same range as he bought his two-story for, just because the cost of housing has gone up that much. Because the cost to build has gone up that much.
I'm in agreement with everything. I'm just concerned about whether his house value at some point in a five to 10-year period will come down. Well.
The builder that I was working with at the time, the builder of my home, gave me a price. And as we were going through the building of the home, the prices kept changing from them making mistakes and they wanted me to pay for it. So we agreed, signed paperwork for, hey, you build this house, I'm gonna pay this much for it. At the end, he tried to raise by $10,000. I'm thinking, how does that work like that? Is that supposed to be about if we sign an agreement? And if you mess up, I, hey, that's you. I'll work with you. But at the end, it's time to close and you said I have to pay an extra $10,000. Hey, if you're gonna cut that off or I'm gone.
Yes, I was, I was asking the questions to the, to the experts.
It happened to two of us.
To the experts because when I went to closing, they, the builder put the additional $4,000 up at the time that he was off.
He didn't put anything up. He wanted me to do it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. I'll leave it to the experts, but I'm doing the best I can to help you.
We need to, ma'am, uh, make an agreement. Well, meeting with.
We have Counselor Chambers wanna make a comment, I believe.
Yes. I, I just wanted to ask, uh, what is the square footage, um, of the homes that you plan on building?
I mean, it's 36.
No, I'm talking to the young lady.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
We're starting at 1,400. But I mean, that won't be comparable to the two-story.
'Cause see, when I was, when I was, uh, yeah. But Counselor Chambers, that's, that's where I was coming from because I know if the numbers are right, but that square footage goes down, eventually it's gonna bring the cost down.
That we did not know.
Well, and I believe we've already been approved for, the lots were approved for 60-foot. We're basically taking the same house and just putting it on a smaller lot to try to bring the housing cost down, just because of the market that we're in. Well, your 1,400 one-story will not be your comp to a two-story, to that large two-story.
You're right. You're right. You're gonna make that seem like 2,000, 200,000.
I'm good, Mayor.
All right. Counselor Tucker.
One, one of the things that I, I wanted to clarify, and I know that we have, um, Mr. Will Johnson, um, back there. But what we learned in the meeting that we had at Revelation, regardless whether this gets approved or not, that you can build exactly the homes that you have in your plan, whether it's on this S F R 3 or S F R 4. So the same home, regardless whether we approve this change. So if this does not get approved, they still can come in and actually do that same bill because it was approved back in 2007. I think that was the year that it was, and it was way before my time. I was in Alaska, um, in the Air Force at the time. So, but, um, this, this project has been, um, really on, I guess, like in the worst. But when the, the housing market crashed, like probably right after you purchased your home, that's when they stopped with the building. They, they halted, um, the progress and they're coming back. So regardless, if this gets approved, it's already approved. And, and that's the thing, like, we can, we cannot approve this and that same home is still going up. And I, and it's nothing we can do about it 'cause it was approved in 2007.
Back in 2007 was there a conversation with the builders or whoever came with that plan to say, I'm gonna put a 1,400 square foot home next to a 39 or 36 and have them pay the same amount they paid for.
And that's, that's.
I mean, and nobody saw that was.
In, in 2007, I was Texas Sergeant Toya Hatcher. So I, I'm just saying, I was not an elected official. So those conversations, I did not have privy to, but they are, there are. have privy to, but they are, there are plans, it has already been approved, whether, you know, unfortunately, whether we approve this or not, that same fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred square foot home with a, with a garage attached, am I correct?
Correct.
With a garage attached will be built regardless whether we approve this or not. However, I do want the community, those individuals, and this'll be the second meeting that we have, that, that way you all can communicate and have, you know, a voice in what's going on because, you know, meaning the facade and amenities and different things like that, that you'll have that connection with the builder.
Well, may I ask the real estate individuals, how's that play in your mind? How, when you sit down, you say, hey, this is good, that was in your neighborhood next to your house? Would that be acceptable, would you say, yep, fourteen hundred and sell it for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars next to a two-story home that's thirty-nine hundred square feet or four thousand square feet and sell it for the same price as that? And you have less amenities and issues than on those houses? I mean, would that sit well with you when you-
Listen-
It's mixed in my neighborhood also.
I'm not saying mixed, I, I ain't talking about that, I'm talking about mixed, I mean, mixed to mean a whole lot of different things. I'm talking about the price you set in a fourteen hundred square foot home next to a thirty-nine, thirty-six, I mean, and you look at it being the same price, who in the world's gonna look at it and say it's the same?
Because it, it happens-
It's not in your neighborhood, that's what-
It, it happens all the time. Your, your house remains, has the same value. We could come and give you a comp for your house and it's gonna be probably in the three hundreds or more. I'd have to see, but-
But you're saying putting a four hundred, fourteen hundred square foot home next to a thirty-six, ten years later, they gonna be the same?
No, they won't be the same. Yours will be more.
Uh, we're, we're just-
Yours will always be more.
Oh, it's, it's fine. Look, I, I'll be, I'll be the, 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 listen, the crash dummy. Right now, I have a house being built right across the street from me and it's the same situation without a garage in a single driveway where they can only put one car. Every house in our cul-de-sac has a garage close to three thousand square feet and then you got this one, one level home that's just plopped right in, in, in the cul-de-sac. It's happening in every community and of course, I live off Steamwell Road, but it's, it's happening because builders, if it's a actual zoning, they can put up whatever without us, yes, they can put up whatever without us actually, if it's already zoned. That's the thing, if it's already zoned and that one is already zoned for that and they can put that fourteen hundred, fourteen hundred square foot, um, home up. But we're gonna talk, can you, can you please give your contact information to Ms. Lindsey and Will Seto?
This, I mean, this is my dream home, I went to war-
I know y'all have a-
Suddenly dropped bombs on me and I'm broke up and this is what I, I dreamed of and this is it. I mean, I can't see it going away, just like-
And I walked your, your, um, subdivision, it's really nice and it's in the cul-de-sac and whoever house that had that nice boat, I don't know if that's you?
That's me.
I kinda figured it. I kinda figured it. But you weren't at home when I had walked through, but it was in, you know, in the daytime, uh, during work hours.
I was willing, I was willing to give my life on it for what-
Yeah, you got a real nice property.
That's all I can say.
Be a little jealous of your house.
Yeah.
So, but thank you, but we'll get with you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I totally believe in a hundred percent transparency with everything that we do in the city. Um, Councilor Tucker made the statement that you, if you guys approve it or disapprove it, it's still going up. However, let's get, let's get, let's talk to the experts and understand if you disapprove it though, what happens with the developer, developer has to spend more money now. So let's be clear that if a citizen comes to you for a disapproval, there's a reason. And if you disapprove, we can't just say, well, it's, we're, we're gonna disapprove it or approve it, it's still going up. But we have to let the citizens know that if you all disapprove it, it causes the developer more, so you put more pressure on the developer, if I'm a citizen, of, of pleading to my elected officials. So I want, we need to make sure that we understand that and the audience knows that. So if there are citizens in this development and they feel that their house, this is a veteran, he just said bombs were dropped on him. And it, I don't know, I felt some type of way. But we have to make sure that we let our citizens know that maybe they need to call everybody up here every day for thirty days and say, disapprove it. We have to make sure that we have the entire picture. And I wasn't gonna say anything 'cause it's not in my neighborhood, but it looks like citizens are crying to you and pleading with you. It is high time we listen and not just say, it's gonna be done no matter what. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm on, I, I know y'all are in, in a hurry to get to your issue that you're here. The only way we're gonna get there is if we hold some of the applause, just some of it down just a little bit. Mr. Counselor, excuse me. Counselor Davis.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanna shed a little light on this. I, I hear the arguments, we're really arguing about five foot on each side of the house, that's it. That's the difference between SFR three and SFR four, it's just the width of the lots. You still have a building site that's in there setbacks and so forth. The developer has a right to put whatever they choose on that site, whether it's smaller, bigger, whether it's two stories, three stories, whatever they wanna do, they can do that, whatever they think the market is, but keep in mind, the more cost to the developer, the more it's gonna cost you to buy the home. He's just gonna pass the cost on and that's not affordable housing. So, the benefit here of going to SFR four, yes, they may get a couple more lots in that area, but look, the site plan, the clearing plan, everything is gonna look the same. All they will get is just a few more houses that they could sell. It keeps their cost down and then they can keep the, you're gonna pay today an inflationary period anywhere from a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and sixty-five dollars a square foot, do the math, fourteen hundred square feet, there's your two hundred plus thousand right there. But one of the hottest concepts in this country right now are the, a lot of them call it fifty-five and over communities, but it's really the young people like it too because it's single-family living, sometimes they have a child, but that's what you're getting now and you're seeing it, it's in my district, it's popping up all over the country, that's what the market is and that's what people are buying. So the developer who's building these houses is trying to establish a market, he's just not gonna build houses if he can't sell them. But the less amount of houses that's in there and the more the cost, that means you're gonna pay more for the house. I mean, that's just the way it's gonna work. And, you know, you, you, we can, we can say, if we say no to this, it's still gonna be developed, it's just gonna be a few less lots, it's still gonna be the same houses. Everything we're talking about's gonna be the same, we have no say-so because it's SFR three. That's what it's on and the developer has the right. I've had so many developments in my district that people are very, very upset about, but we have no public hearing process, no input or anything like that because the zoning is what it is. And all they're asking to do is spread it out five feet on both sides, which will give them a few more houses, but everything else, the roads, lots, and everything else is gonna be the same at the end of the day. So, I, I don't know if people see that or get that picture, but that's really what's going on here. And you can, you can deny it, but, I mean, that, I would assume the developer's still gonna develop and, and probably whatever the cost is, probably gonna go from, what'd you say, two forty, two fifty to two sixty?
Right.
Two sixty-five.
Unfortunately, if we were to build a three thousand square foot home at this point in time with cost, we're talking four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that, that would be a hard, it'd be a hard sell.
And most of the homes back can, look, barring no housing crisis, I think we all went through the housing crisis, barring that there's no black swan event in this country, barring the economic challenges that are here, um, valuations we've seen in the last three years have gone, everybody knows, your values on your homes have gone up, your taxes have gone up, valuations have gone up. You know, they've gone up, in my opinion, astronomical, but they have. And it's really tough to make that, that, that challenge, to make that, uh, that, that challenge work, but you can't put a three thousand square foot home on these lots and, and make it work. I mean, it's just not gonna work today. There was a time when it worked, but it doesn't work today and it's just, it's a market that's out there and it's what's selling and developers are gonna go in that direction. We see it all over town, I'm dealing within the district I represent. So that's really what, you know, at the end of the day, you're dealing with costs and you're dealing with five foot on either side, that's it. But everything else stays the same.
All right, thank you. All right, doesn't appear to be any more questions.
All right, we'll close out that hearing, Mayor. We'll bring that item back at the first regular meeting in August. We've got another first reading ordinance on new, uh, wage an hour rates for Civic Center temporary labor. And I think Deputy City Manager Goodwin would like to explain this a little bit first.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Um, what we have here is, um, the fact that our labor pool, and the labor pool consists of those intermittent, um, workers that we have, that whenever there is an event, uh, those are the ones that we call in for ushers or janitorial or any of those things. And this cost is a pass-through cost to the promoter. Uh, we have, uh, employees, uh, that, uh, that we call on for these events that are making nine dollars an hour and our summer workers, youth workers that we had here just for this summer, were making fourteen dollars an hour. Uh, and so we are trying to bring these employees up and one of the other issues is the fact that we have been having a number of events, a lot more events at the Civic Center, uh, and it's hard to maintain these employees, you know, with nine dollars an hour, they're looking for something different. They're, they're, they're not, they can't make a living with that. Uh, and so we come to you asking if we can increase these costs in order to retain these employees for these events.
Well, I'm trying to get to Counselor Thomas. Hang on.
Tell me, um, where's-
Now, you've done yours right, this thing, I can't flat this thing. Here we go, try that. That's Bruce. There you go. That's Counselor.
There we go. Uh, Ms. Goodwin, can you tell me, uh, where in the, um, FY twenty-five budget this will be coming from?
Uh-
And, and Ms. Mayor, well, the finance director can answer, but, uh, I believe you did share that this is a pass-through cost. Uh, when you deal with promoters, uh, and whatever labor is required to, uh, handle an event, there are shows in the various temporary, but part-time, that's in your settlement document and that's a pass-through cost to that promoter. So if, if, if we change the pay from nine to say fourteen, uh, finance director is gonna pass through to the promoter.
Correct. Any additional?
Yes. And so your, your, your expenses will go up, but your revenue will go up, um, at the same time.
I'm sorry, say the last thing that you said again.
Your, your expenses will increase, but your revenue will increase to offset the expenses, um, and, and it's no different than if we predict that we're gonna have fifty events and we have sixty events, we come to you each time to say we need to increase the expenses and the revenue is gonna increase as well because we added more events. And so it's similar to, you know, it, it gets passed through to the, to the promoter.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, um, we knew that this is not going to-
No.
-um, decrease, uh, the ending balance or any of that kind of stuff.
Absolutely not.
It's, it's just a straight through cost.
Yeah, absolutely not.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Thank you.
Deputy City Manager, thank you so much, I just glad you brought it forward. Uh, I've been approached by a lot of the part-time workers over the last couple of years, you know, trying to make sense of us bringing in summer employment, making more than they do and they are constantly our part-time people that we rely on to get us by. So thank you, 'cause this, this just came up, probably when we had the, um-
Yeah.
Public safety games, it came up.
Yeah. And we probably, obviously, should've done this some time ago, but we're trying to keep expenses down for promoters.
Right.
Uh, but when you've got a, a middle school kid in the mayor's work program, uh, or high school kid making fourteen dollars an hour and they're at the Civic Center and you got the adults coming in, doing this work, and they're at nine dollars?
That's right.
There's a problem.
That's right. But thank you, I appreciate you.
So we need to fix it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, any more questions around the table on that item? We'll, we'll bring it back then, uh, also, Mayor, first meeting in August. The, uh, one of the other business item, Mayor, is we've got a request for executive session on litigation, personnel matters and real estate acquisition and disposal. And before we go on to the next agenda, I wanna welcome Counselor Chambers, he has heard some robust discussion, but, uh, welcome him to the meeting and the table. That's all we've got.
I didn't hear that last part, I apologize.
He's welcoming Counselor Chambers to the table, he's heard a lot of robust discussion and, uh, he's hit the ground running, but-
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we'll move to the, um, public agenda. And, uh, what I'll let you know is that everybody will have five minutes. And again, I apologize in advance, we have to stay strict on the five minutes so that we don't allow somebody more time than the others. If you can't get all of your informa-, can't get all of your information out in five minutes, you're welcome to come back and, uh, have three minutes at the end of the clerk's agenda. So we'll, uh, we'll start with Mr. Cody Collier representing the Revolution Project regarding inquiries about the additions that will be made to the Muskogee County Jail. Mr. Collier? And if you would, when you get to the, Mike just states your name and your, your address and I'll start the min-, unfortunately, we don't have a clock that you can see, I'll give you a signal at one minute, though. There we go.
Cool. Howdy, City Council, uh, genuinely thank you for your time. My name is Cody Collier and I'm with an organization called The Revolution Project or as we like to call it Revproge. We are a group of Columbus citizens who volunteer our time grassroots organizing and helping our community directly through our work. We have a lot of conversations, a lot of the people we talk to are system impacted and have stories about our local jail. We hope to relay this information to you as constituents and we hope to use our resources to assist in this process as best as we can with your guidance. So, thank you so much for all the progress that you've already made since we were last here. When communicating with our incarcerated and formerly incarcerated friends, we mostly hear about two things regarding the Muskogee County Jail. Firstly, we hear about the mold issue, which you all are making great strides to address. But secondly, however, we hear about their maddening relationship with the lights. I'm sure by now we are all aware of how disorienting and nauseating fluorescent lighting can be over long periods of time. At our jail, those lights never turn off. Many report sleeping on the top bunk bed with their head right next to these lights night after night. Inmates aren't even given a blanket to block the lights out. We've seen images of- We've seen images of lights being covered in cardboard toothpaste boxes as our inmates try to dim the lights even slightly. The issue with the lights wouldn't be as psychologically damaging if there was opportunity to experience real sunlight. When the Civil Rights Division came to our town in 1999, they recommended a lot of things that were implemented, but outdoor recreation time was one of the things that was recommended but not implemented. When an inmate anywhere petitions the Supreme Court about solitary confinement, the lack of access to the outdoors is always a large aspect of their case against cruel and unusual punishment. In these cells of the inmates that, from across the country that have petitioned the Supreme Court, the windows are identically slim and ineffective as the ones that we have in many, but not all, the jail cells at the Muskogee County Jail. So, we've identified a potential location for an outdoor courtyard that is already fenced in. Alternatively, the roof of the indoor courtyard could be removed, the walls could be heightened, security measures can be made. We recognize that folk have trepidations about investing into the jail more than we need to, as it will one day be torn down. However, ending our jail status as an indoor-only jail after 75 years is the lowest hanging fruit of criminal justice reform that we can achieve as a community, and we shouldn't wait five years for an important issue that can be so easily addressed. Additionally, we noticed that there are two options for the new jail. One seems to be a two-story version with an outdoor courtyard in the middle. The second option seems to be a three-story version that does not have an outdoor courtyard. We are curious what the council's inclinations are regarding these two options, and we'd like it known that we support the option that has the outdoor courtyard. And finally, we have a rally for criminal justice reform coming up. It'll be outside the jail this Saturday, July 27th, 12:30 PM to 2:00 PM, near the intersection of 8th Avenue and 9th Street. We have people passing out flyers that have a map, and you can find our flyer and our rally map on our Instagram, @Revproj, R-E-V-P-R-O-J. And so genuinely, thank you so much for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. All right, next is Ms. Teresa Elamene regarding disposessory evictions and government center restrictions. Yes, ma'am.
Council. And welcome, Mr. Chambers. Thank you for making history. We love you. Do a good job, do your best work. While I'm here speaking on disposessaries, evictions, and the fact that I'm restricted going into the government center, I don't know who put in that order, but let me get that part out of the way. When I go into the government center, I have to have a sheriff's escort through the government center. I have to wait there at security until somebody comes. I've waited as long as 20 minutes. I don't know who put in that order, but it needs to be rescinded. I am not a danger. I carry no weapons. I want them to stop doing that to me when I go into the government center, Mr. Mayor. I've been trying to find out who put in such an order, but it's been going on for over a year. Now, on the issue of disposessaries, there were 2,945 disposessaries filed by landlords. See, we got at least four people up here who are been past or presently in real estate, whether they be hotel developers or real estate agents. We got a bunch of them up here. And for the work I'm doing, when an ordinance comes up, I expect a few recusals. Do you hear me? I expect a few recusals on the runner's bill of rights. So the evictions, real estate folks, they losing a lot of money, a lot of money. The Sheriff's Department evicted 700 residences from January 1 until July 19. And I sent all of you the open records I received from the municipal clerk with the addresses and the realtors who got enough nerve to evict somebody, and I am talking term of realty, I'm talking them, because they're on that list more than any other big company, because they are slum lords. We got a bunch of slum lords up in here, and we gonna start naming them, because the NAACP got a housing committee and we ready with the picket signs, okay? Because the evictions in this town are out of control. In East Wenton, you go down Rigdon Road, it's been four people sat out just on Rigdon Road in your district, Mr. Huff, in the last month. On my block of Shaw Street, which I think is the best block on Shaw Street, somebody got set out there. But all along Shaw Street, past Lawyer's Lane and elsewhere, people getting set out, Mr. Chambers, getting set out. See, Elite Ventures is on that list, you know, it's on that list. I believe that's your company of people filing disposessaries. So we, we, you know, we gonna have complete transparency up in here, folks, because we need affordable housing. And what I know, that if we had people who really care, you would develop some of this land in collaboration with the Housing Authority to get some affordable housing units up in here. Because I lived in a place for 12 years, and when Table Rock Capital came from Nevada, because this is like open season now, Columbus is for sale, so the investors are coming in here by the truckloads. When they took over Cross Creek Apartments, raising the rent I had from 705 to 1,300, I jumped out of the frying pan into the fire, going to Whisperwood, where I was paying 1427 a month. I finally found a decent landlord in East Wenton. And my personal story is important. You've been to my house, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Huff, so you know, it's not a bad deal. $1,045 for 1,580 square feet, three bedrooms, one and a half baths. The lease is a one pager. At Whisperwood, 52 pages of mumbo jumbo.
I hate to tell you, time is up.
No, no, no.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You're gonna have to sit down.
Well, I'll be back.
We will look for you at the end of the clerk's agenda.
Yeah, but what you need to do to be fair is have the little time thing up there so people can see when that time is running out. Because they do have that, they do have that technology.
You need to sit down, ma'am.
I'm gonna sit down, Mr. Mayor, because I do what you say.
Thank you.
Even when you're wrong, I do what you say. Come on now, back off, back off, please.
I don't know where it is, but yeah, for the next week, yeah. On the 3rd? I think we'll be here on the 3rd, I think. All right. Next is Ms. Claire Thomas, representing animal advocacy regarding the importance of microchipping your companion.
Before you start my timer, I just have to say, at the beginning of the meeting, you said that there were so many passionate people about our topics here that you would allow them to stay in, and over 100 people got kicked out.
Unfortunately, the Fire Marshal overrides me.
Nothing was said to them, so can we allow at least the 20 people that have not left?
Well, what we've done, you go ahead to start, I'm gonna start your time, we've opened the doors and allowed them to be able to participate in this as long as we can.
But you said they could stay in.
They could. The folks that are there right now, you're wasting your time, ma'am, let's go ahead.
Can you not hear me? Okay, you start my timer now?
I started it.
Nope. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak to you about the importance of microchipping your companion pets in Columbus. Accidents happen, and if your pets end up at a shelter like our very own, Columbus Animal Control, one of the first things that should be done is scan for a microchip. If chipped in the registry database has accurate information, they can quickly reunite families. One of the main focuses of CAC should be to reunite owners with their pets. Excuse me. However, I've found that they have sometime failed to effectively scan and return pets to their owners. On May 14th, I spoke to you about these issues. An example I gave to you was a dog that had been there for six days with its owner's phone number and address on its collar around its neck, and it was microchipped. CAC has continually failed to make minimal efforts to reunite owners and pets to save lives and for space. On June 11th, the famous dog named Milo came into CAC not on the 10th of June, like was told on the video that was published to, with Milo's dad. That day at 11:47, I grabbed a screenshot of Milo from the CAC's website, showed a microchip, so I did a found dog report. According to CAC's records, an ACO officer attempted to contact the registered owner one time. Milo was given to a rescue as an owner's surrender, shipped to Pennsylvania, and adopted in a few days. Recently, I made a Facebook post about the microchip debacle. I do not work for CAC, I do not work for a rescue, I don't work for a shelter, I'm just a normal person who loves dogs and do what I can to help save lives. It takes five minutes to research a chip number, call the owner or email them. The week of June 13th, I did six found reports for dogs with chips listed on CAC's website. Two of them had been there for four days. Five were reunited with their families, Paws took two whose chips originated 20 feet away at Paws, but nobody from CAC called them. I did. The owners called me. Again, nobody from CAC called them, they called me. If they would just put as much effort into reuniting families as they do hauling them in, only to be killed for space. Ironically, the day after my Facebook post, CAC disabled the microchip field from being viewable by the public. However, there's still dogs there for days before being scanned. But as usual, CAC leadership does the total opposite of what national organizations, rescues, animal advocates, and the community to offer as solutions for the ever-growing problems and issues there. Please don't forget to register your pets' microchips and keep your contact information up to date. I'm sure you've all seen the horrific videos revealed by Columbus Animal Allies. I personally want it on record that two employees used my name in vain and lied, I'm gonna say lied, about what I said. I said, "Open the back door and let them free," not meaning to run frolic play in the parking lot so that they could have their own little fight ring. I suggested putting the dogs in the horse trailer with crates and fans. I was there to adopt a dog for transport to save a life, and it was on a day, it was a known fact they were gonna kill at least 12 dogs. I was not sitting out there waiting to see what the beep we do. And yes, Lieutenant, I am effing smart. Your community is demanding, that's what an ACO officer said, they were mocking me as a citizen. Your community is demanding an independent, external investigation of CAC and for it to be removed from under Public Works. I found it very ironic that CAC is under that city department, since as you can see in precious tries killing videos, the animals at CAC are treated like trash. Do y'all have any comments or feedback for the community on these topics?
More videos.
No? No feedback? Is my time up?
Time's up.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
All right, next is Ms. Debbie Wooten. Columbus Animal Allies regarding animal welfare within our community. Did I skip Ally again? Ally, I apologize, I apologize, I had struck through it. So this is Ms. Ally, through her name, through Ally Johnson, representing Columbus Animal Allies, treatment of animals at Columbus Animal Care and Control.
Okay, thank you. And if anyone could just let me get through so I can say what I have to say before, you know, not that you're gonna applaud, but if you do. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing me to speak. As we know that you're all aware about the shocking footage that was recorded by the security and surveillance cameras at Columbus Animal Care and Control Center from 4:00 to 8:00 PM on June 18th, 2024, a day that 12 dogs were killed for space. These dogs were Tiffany, Cardi, Axel, Myrna, Lil Mama and her baby, Chocolate Chip, Marina, Brock, Ashlyn, Sheena, Opal, and Chai. These videos are from one four-hour period of just one day at CACC. If this does not show you how deep and systemic these issues are, I don't know what would, how, I don't even imagine what you would see if you saw the video of every day for the past year and three months at CACC, what would be revealed on there. The most disturbing of these videos shows, show the death of Chai, a one-year-old dog who was surrendered to CACC by her owner. She was described as affectionate, playful, good with other dogs and cats and all people. CAC staff members with CACC manager Kanita Hardnett-Johnson there supervising as she walked in and out of the area repeatedly. Killed Chai not in the quote-unquote euthanasia room, but on the concrete floor of the main kennel area in full view of other dogs in their runs.
That's just wrong.
Chai wagged her tail as CACC staff members first attempted to do an IV injection in the vein in Chai's leg. Once the solution entered her body, she began to struggle, almost knocked over a chair and tried to get away. A staff member sat on the floor and held her down. They injected Chai at least four times in a botched attempt at IV, quote-unquote euthanasia, before injecting her heart in a heart stick. Then they walked away from her while she was still alive and left her dying alone on the floor. You could see the needle moving in her body to see that she was still alive. Staff members walked by, stepping around her body, carrying mops and brooms, and walking past with other dogs on leashes. A veterinarian who viewed the footage described it as, quote, torture. At the end of 37 minutes after her first injection, two CACC staff, CACC staff members picked up Chai by the feet and tossed her into a cart full of dead dogs without ever using a stethoscope to confirm that she was dead. I wanted to bring some things to your attention about this video and the accompanying documents also obtained through open records. One, the euthanasia form that staff is required by law to fill out accurately and truthfully and sign their name to falsely state that Chai was killed by UV, by IV euthanasia, with no mention of a heart stick. The forms also state tranquilizer was used, which is unclear if that is true. It's a violation of state law to leave an animal alone or dispose of their body without confirming death. Public Works Director Drail Short previously stated on video at Animal Control Advisory Board meeting in January 2024 that CACC does not do heart stick euthanasia. City Manager Isaiah Hughley falsely stated the same in an email sent to a citizen before this video came out. In one of the CACC videos, just before Chai was killed, two animal control officers can be heard complaining, using foul language, that an unnamed coworker's incompetence in doing IV euthanasia will make the deaths take too long, causing them to have to work late. They state the person should just do a heart stick and get it over with. There absolutely must be a thorough, detailed, independent, all in caps, investigation done of all aspects of CACC to include finances, regulatory issues, violations of state law, and inhumane treatment of animals. The city must also request a parallel criminal investigation by a qualified law enforcement agency such as the GBI or CPD. In the meantime, CACC must be moved out from under Public Works, and the management and employees seen on those videos must be removed from all positions that involve handling animals. They must be removed from all positions that involve handling animals and using controlled substances. They're right there now at that building, and they're with animals, and who knows what's happening there, and they put out a kill list for today. More is coming to light. Yesterday, a whistle- They must be removed from all positions that involve handling animals and using controlled substances. They're right there now at that building, and they're with animals, and who knows what's happening there, and they put out a kill list for today. More is coming to light. Yesterday, a whistleblower who worked for CACC for a year has come forward and should be talking to all of you, hopefully this evening, but if not very soon, revealing more than what was seen in these videos and helping you understand the systemic nature of the problem and how it stems from a lack of compassionate management at this facility that goes back more than a decade. This person and others who may come forward will be shielded by strong whistleblower protections under the law. We will be pursuing every possible avenue to make sure the truth is revealed and those responsible are held accountable, including consulting with an attorney who has reached out to us, having an independent veterinary review of the videos and all associated documents, and pursuing violations with every regulatory agency involved, including the DEA, which oversees proper use and documentation of controlled substances.
Ally, I'm gonna have to ask you. Ally, you can come back. All right, now it's Ms. Debbie Wooten. And this is Columbus Animal Allies Regarding Animal Welfare Within Our Community.
I am Debbie Wooten. I'm born and raised in my beloved hometown of Columbus, which I am now ashamed of. I've had businesses in Columbus, successful businesses, for years. I am a founding member of Columbus Animal Allies along with Ally and Mimi. And the videos of what happened to Chai and other dogs at CACC on June 18th, 2024 have had an enormous impact on this community. People are heartbroken, shocked, outraged, appalled, and many other emotions in Columbus, in the state of Georgia, and around and beyond. And Isaiah Hughley said that Columbus is well-known. Yes, sir, we are, and not in a good light. I would like to read you some of the reactions so you can understand the impact this has had on our community. I spent the last hours of her life with her at PetSmart. I cannot watch this. She was a precious girl. Sharon King Smith, Columbus, Georgia, retired federal DOD employee, CACC volunteer, longtime dog lover. They have my heart. At approximately 6:34-ish, look at Chai, she is wagging her tail. Apparently, the girl is saying something to her. Chai is being killed. She is not fighting or trying to bite. She is sure I'm terrified and confused as to what is happening inside her body. Can you imagine what the other dogs are going through, what they are feeling? They smell death all around them. How horribly terrified they must feel to just dump these sweet souls in a gray dumpster is sick. Is the last dog still alive after being dumped? Something has to be done about this. Innocent, loving dogs do not deserve to die, period. Sandy Cornet, lifetime animal lover, retired medical worker who donates to rescues, Mississippi resident who lived in Georgia for 17 years and has family throughout Georgia. I have never been more angry at the government agency and leadership as I am with this horrific event. I had nightmares last night. The city manager and mayor have responded, they will investigate. We'll see what they do if it's another cover-up. I'm sick. Tom Lowkey, Columbus resident, retired USA Air Force officer, also retired from one of the country's largest banks where he worked with consumer protection laws. He's a volunteer at Paws Humane. Through medical issues, he's limited what he's able to do. As I sit here at home playing with my dog and giving him hugs and kisses, telling him how much I missed him today, I read about how Columbus Animal Control killed 12 dogs in a single day last month. One of them was an owner's surrender named Chai. Chai was not only using us for space, like so many other dogs in Columbus, but she was killed in such an inhumane way for a taxpayer-funded institution that I immediately brought to tears. They injected her with over five times the amount they were advised to. They left her on the floor to die alone for at least a 15-minute span. They even falsified the documents. They are legally required to keep to cover themselves. The city is doing nothing about this. It's an issue every single day at Columbus Animal Control. It's gotten worse over the last few years. We all need to attend the city council meetings. Please, please, come to this meeting so the managers of this institution understand it's not just an animal question, Mr. City Manager. Every living animal deserves better than this. Sam Gaskin. I live in Columbus, Georgia. I grew up in Harris County with many animals of my own, which followed me as an adult. I am an advocate for every animal and continuously donates to shelters in this area. It's crucial that Animal Control be held accountable and take full responsibility for their recently discovered actions and practices. Discovery of such actions not only violates ethical standards, but undermines the trust and integrity that should define their role in this community. Animals entrusted to their care deserve compassion, respect, and protection. Yet illegal practices betray these principles. We cannot overlook the gravity of these violations. Holding Animal Control accountable isn't just about punishing wrongdoing, it's about restoring faith in their ability to safeguard vulnerable animals and uphold the law. By taking accountability, Columbus Animal Control demonstrates a commitment to transparency and corrective action. This is not a matter of bureaucratic procedure, but a moral, moral impediment. We owe each of the animals affected and to our community to ensure such breaches of trust are addressed swiftly and thoroughly. Tessa Wardley. I'm a foster parent for Paws Humane, married to the Army. We are stationed at Fort Moore, we reside in Fort Mitchell, I work for a Fortune 500 company, we have several dogs who we've adopted from rescues. If someone is not part of the solution, they're part of the problem. At this point, I consider Ms. Hardnett-Johnson to be a major part of the problem. Her with her uncaring attitude and preventing an animal advocate from being in that position. Janice Pennell, Columbus resident. I started volunteering at CACC after adopting my dog Rocky from there in 2019 and left because I could not handle it when I started killing for space. I would like my three minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Rabina Farand, Regarding Practice and Procedures of Animal Care Facilities.
Ma'am, can I say something? I'm a citizen.
No, but if you, ma'am, I'm afraid you can't.
Well, it has to do with Animal Control, about what I went through with them.
These folks have signed up to speak. You'll have an opportunity to speak at a subsequent meeting.
Hello, my name is Rabina Farand. Thank you very much for having me, letting me speak this evening. I'm here to voice my concern and advocate for all the animals at CACC. First, let me tell you a little bit about myself. At age 48, I began volunteering at a shelter. Through volunteering and at the advice of my mentor, I became a certified dog trainer at the age of 57. I now work as a behaviorist because I want to help the hundreds of dogs being abandoned. Thousands and thousands of dogs are waiting for a home just to feel love. I continue to volunteer my time and share my knowledge at little to no cost because dogs residing at CACC are being judged with no behavior assessment procedure in place. Over the past 12 months, I have been contacted through Facebook Messenger by individuals and surrounding rescues for my advice with dogs that have been pulled from CACC. The conversations I have had about how the dog testing is being done is nowhere near how a proper assessment should be done. I'm not here to criticize, but to offer a solution. I am only one person, so I will need your help in implementing a new procedure to assess behavior tests. It is extremely important to know which dogs are healthy, adoptable, and manageable. Only dogs with the prognosis of being unhealthy and untreatable should be euthanized. Let me repeat that. Only dogs with the prognosis of being unhealthy and untreatable should be euthanized. Lastly, I am publicly stating, my services are free to help this community. To help create more adoptable dogs, which means the cost of euthanizing and the time spent euthanizing goes down. Let's create a community that advocates for a socially conscious animal welfare and draw people into Columbus. The hundreds of people who care about animal welfare at their core are the same people who may or may not vote for you. My goal is to change the mindset of each of you sitting before me on how we make progress at CACC so that everyone involved sees a dog or a cat in a new light. We can make more, we can have more adoptions if we create procedures to make dogs more adoptable. Thank you for your time.
All right, next, Ms. Debbie Mayhew, Regarding Columbus Animal Control Center. I'll start it when you start.
Hi, my name is Debbie Mayhew. And my residence is 3401 Hilton Woods Drive. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and Council Members. Last Wednesday, I visited the Columbus Animal Control and Care Center after seeing a plea on Facebook from CACC volunteers that were urgently seeking food and supplies due to an influx of new puppies that had come in. They shared a picture of an empty shelf, and the situation moved me to help. After my visit, I felt compelled to share my experience with as many people in Columbus as possible because I knew immediate action was necessary. It was on this same day that disturbing and inhumane videos surfaced depicting Chai's death, the unnecessary euthanasia, no murder of 12 allegedly good dogs due to lack of space, despite their posted daily report indicating that there was four available runs left. The discrepancy in that is unbelievable. They killed 12 dogs, and there were four open runs. Where's the math? Runs were open. Having lived in Columbus for nearly 31 years, more than half of my life, this city is my The current management and practices at CACC are simply unacceptable for our hometown. The Facebook post I made about my experience moved many people, and I was encouraged to share with Council. The following is my post. I went to hell today. That's Columbus Animal Control and Care Center. My daughter, she's 16, and I had some food items to donate because last week the volunteers made a plea about how many puppies were being brought in, and there was no food for them. They showed a picture of an empty shelf. Apparently, our city budget doesn't cover that. There are pleas all of the time for items needed in this Animal Control Center. Anyway, we were told to sign in, and before we went back, a lady stopped us and asked us about our bags. We told her they were food donations, and she said we could put them on a chair across the room. We did. Next, we opened the door to the most humid atmosphere that had such an awful smell to it that I cannot stop smelling it. An hour later, and I still smell it, all in capital letters. And the barking, the loud barking is traumatizing. I leaned over to my daughter and said, "We have just entered hell." It is awful that our city runs a shelter like this and refuses to help those animals or make change at every opportunity offered. We walked up and down runs, and we noticed so many dogs looked the same. Most have pit in them. Several of the dogs are in runs marked, "Please hold." A month later, and they are still taking up space. From the new strays brought in, CACC is not amazing, as our city catchphrase tells. Nope, I would compare it to hell. My daughter even noticed the huge difference between how the animals are kept in that facility versus how they are kept in the facility next door at Paws Humane. They've got it going on. My heart broke for those dogs as we walked out. Knowing the depths of hell we just left, I started to cry, and my daughter asked if I was okay. I said, "No, we do have to do something. I want everyone I know to know how I feel and to understand what it felt like in that place today." Oh, and no acknowledgement of the food as we left. It was gone off the chair. I just hope it made it to the dogs. I ask each citizen out there to take the time and go see it yourself. I'd also like to ask for my extra three minutes. I ask you, Mr. Mayor and Council Members, what will it take? What? To turn that place around? Over and over, the community has asked for change. Many citizens have come before you suggesting ideas for change, and having made the same plea at CAC, evidence has been shown and proven, yet nothing is done. And there is no change. You already know Best Friends Animal Society offered to come and make suggestions to improve our facility and how it's run for free, no charge, and this was turned down. A national experience organization that has proven programs and management refused help in their offer. That's disgraceful and insane. I am the voice for the voiceless, and I'll be back with my three minutes. Thank you.
Ms. Mayhew, thank you, and thank everybody that took time to come up here and share their thoughts about this. Several counselors, several counselors want to speak, and we're gonna allow them to. What I will tell you very simply is, the investigation that will be performed will be reported publicly. We will bring that information, any findings in that investigation. Any findings will be done in the public. They will be shared. They will be shared. I think we've got Ms. Hughes. I'm trying to find who's next on. This'll tell us. Okay, go ahead. Counselor Hickey?
Let them go first. First of all, I'd just like to say that I had an opportunity to look at that video, and I was appalled. It's very disturbing. I'm an animal lover. I have four pets of my own, and to witness what I saw is very troubling for me. And what I'd like to ask this Council to do tonight is that we ask for a formal investigation into all of this, that we be completely transparent about all of this. I received an email with a concerned citizen being concerned about it being swept under the rug, and I assure that individual that it won't be swept under the rug. We need for this to be looked into, and I suggest that we bring in Columbus Police Department to do it, because we need a third-party entity to do this. We don't need to be investigating ourselves. We need a third-party entity doing this, and we need a thorough investigation and the report brought back to this Council of their findings. And in the meantime, if there is any, all the people that were involved, I would recommend that in this investigation, if there are found to be some violations, that the police department do their job, and then also, these people need to be placed on administrative leave until all this is done. Thank you.
Counselor Kogel?
Counselor Kogel? I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for coming out here tonight. I, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for coming out here tonight. I am a, I know I communicate with several of you throughout the week and on a daily basis about your concerns of what's happening at Animal Control. I too have watched the video numerous times. I am tagged on it everywhere on Facebook and Instagram and in my email, and it is one of the most nauseating and inappropriate things that I have ever seen. I am also a serial dog collector from Animal Control and do my best to help you all find homes that are appropriate for those animals that I'm able to. So I do want to say thank you to all of you for coming up here and speaking your voices. That's the only way that we're going to be able to change this. I do acknowledge that this department can indeed do a better job, and I think it's our job as a council to initiate that going forward. So again, I appreciate you all coming forward and your communication with all of us up here. What is happening and what has happened at Council or at Animal Control is unacceptable and inhumane, in my opinion.
Councilor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, this can't go on. These folks have come to us time and time and time again and said they have a problem. We've got to do whatever we need to do to take care of this problem. I would support Councilor Hickey's recommendation for an independent investigation. I think the Columbus Police Department, if that's the body that is selected to do that, will do us a great job. But the next time you folks come into this chamber at City Council, I want you to be saying, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." And Mr. Mayor, if there needs to be a motion to implement Councilor Hickey's recommendation, I so move.
I make a motion that we ask for an outside agency to come in, preferably CPD, to investigate.
Then I would second that motion.
We can codify it with a motion. We've already started that process, so there is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any votes? Okay.
And also, Mr. Mayor, I would just like for administrative leave to be put in place during the investigation. So my motion is that we ask CPD to come in to do the investigation, and also, those that need to be placed on administrative leave, be placed on administrative leave during the investigation.
I think that was all noted in the council's recommendation, so we'll move forward with that. Sir, if you'd turn your light off for me. Thank you.
I fully support Councilor Hickey's motion, and I would request that there be an immediate response to the chair of the Animal Control Board. We elected, we've put those people in place to represent our citizens, represent our rescues, and they've requested an emergency meeting. The board members are on board with meeting. They have not gotten responses from the administrative side, and they want to immediately address this issue, and I'd like them to be involved in this investigation, and I think they should be part of selecting who does help investigate with us.
Councilor Davis?
Mayor, thank you. I am appalled too, and I certainly agree with Councilor Thomas. I did not expect to be dealing with this matter tonight, but it's in our hands. A week ago, I saw the video, and what came to my mind is we have tried hard as a legislative body, we're the legislative body, and with our charter, the way our government's set up, you've got the executive administration as the head of operations and management, and then you've got the legislative body and judicial body. I have tried, I think other councilors, we have tried to work together to find a way within our means, on our side of the table, to try to figure this out and see how we can help because we hear, when you come, we hear you, and we take notes, and we listen, and we may not address it right then and there, but we're working behind the scenes, trying to find solutions, and we know that it does, what hurts is we know it doesn't happen overnight. I didn't expect to see what I saw in that video because your questions, I've tried to ask your questions to the people just to get them on record of what's going on and how they do things. I asked specifically about euthanasia, and I was told it was done humanely. I was told it was done intervenously. I was told that it was done the right way, and it wasn't. It was uncalled for, it was unnecessary, it was inappropriate. I said too, at some of those meetings, regardless of where we are on the spectrum of animal welfare, and we've got as our jobs to have to balance between the public and animal welfare. It's not easy. It's not easy looking at families when they die, when they're attacked, or when they lose their legs, or when they look like a shark has torn them apart, those kind of things or other matters. That's not easy either. But this is not easy in dealing with the humane treatment of animals, and I said in public, if you go back and look at my words, I will not tolerate it. I will not. And I agree with all my colleagues, and yes, I think CPD needs to do the independent investigation because there's issues. I've been spending the last few days reading as much material as I can about what took It should have never happened. Should have never happened, and we need answers. We need answers. And I want to just share, I felt like we were starting to head on a good path this last budget cycle. We spent close to a million dollars, in addition, close to a million dollars in animal control and what they've asked for, to try to get, one, over $250,000 for spay and neutering for anybody that wants adoption, we will do that. We spent $200,000, close to $200,000 for microchipping, medical supplies, and all the needs necessary that we can start addressing some of these concerns that we hear with the health of the animals. We added more personnel, we added reoccurring cost. We have tried to take care of requests that have come. We've got a post that just went out that I thought's going to make a difference, and actually, I'm happy to say, a veterinarian, a full-time veterinarian that will have governance. If you read the job description, it will have governance. I came here tonight to make sure that that job description had the governance, everything that we're talking about, that that individual would be in charge of the operations and call all the shots. That's the only hope I have, that animals are treated humanely in our community. I trust that person, and I hope it's the right person. I don't know who it is, but we put their salary up, and we're willing to go up higher on the salary. And Mr. City Manager, I'm going to tell you tonight, I didn't see it in the job posting, but I would ask, even if we need to amend the budget, that the continued educations, the licensing requirement for the veterinarians, all those needs on an annual basis, that we take care of that as well. That should be added in that description, and I think that's going to make a difference. And we can get somebody. I hope they set policies and procedures in a way that I have to believe that animals will be treated humanely, but what happened, like I said, I wasn't prepared tonight to come to see that video a week ago and then realize that that's unacceptable. And I won't tolerate it. I'm telling you, I won't tolerate it. I said that, my words all I got, and I will stand by that, getting the facts of what happened, and I agree with everything that's said here tonight, and we've got to make some changes. And not only that, we've got to make some changes out in our community. We need, most likely, to start looking at our ordinances and our laws. If we can strengthen them. I don't know what that means, but I'm currently working with the city attorney to try to do some things, updating and amending on the tethering ordinance. I'm working on that now, but we've got a long ways to go. I don't know, and I'm telling you, it's me, just my eyes, I don't, I've never seen the number of the animals now on the population side. I don't know what's happening, but there just seems to be numbers that I've never seen before, and I can only guess. I can only guess, but we need to find out also in the investigation, is it just a Columbus matter? Is it a matter with, is it a matter with Fort Moore? Or are people actually, I hear, I hear all the time that we, other counties are dumping animals in our county and giving us their problem. I hear that all the time. We need to find out. We need to understand that, and I think that's going to help us with some direction in how we need to make the adjustments. And I, look, I'm sitting here telling you, we're, there are state regulations and laws and requirements and things that we have to go through, but still, there's things we can do locally. We just need to know what they are and how we can amend it and make it better, because that's what I'm hearing you say. We need to make it better. It's not, it's obvious what happened shows you that it's not good right now. We need to figure out a way to make it better. So I give you my word on that, and I said I will not tolerate inhumanity to animals under any circumstances.
Thank you, sir. Councilor, Councilor Tucker?
On yesterday, we had a Come Save Me campaign that went out. I'm a request for future Come Save Me campaigns if we could make that fee zero instead of doing $50. That way, we can really promote trying to get individuals to come and adopt, especially when we're constantly at the point of having to euthanize. And it is happening. I was in Tampa, and this was a conversation that we had meant over, really, the southern states, all up and down the east coast, of course, in certain areas where you have a heart freeze, they don't have the problems that we have, but we had a major conversation about animal care and control for National Association of County Officials in Tampa. And yes, whoever called my name out, I am very, very saddened, and I said, and I almost, I think I cried at WTVM yesterday because it is, it's sad. You know, you close your eyes, it's all you see is the dogs being thrown in a bin like trash. That's sad. That's sad. So yes, and because my seatmate is the district counselor, and I had to tell him, I apologized because I was quick draw when I sent that message out saying that, yes, we should have an investigation. That was something that I said immediately, but I talked to him and I said, "I'll step back and step down and let you care the baton," because it is his district and he does care. But we all care. We all care. It's wrong. It is wrong. It is wrong. But yes, I do think that we need to make those fees zeroed out. That way, and also on the euthanasia list, if we can just do a zero, not charge the $50 and actually make it free for the Come Save Me. But, and, yes.
We can't, I'm sorry, we can't go back and forth.
And the euthanization. I'm looking, because I know Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin will make it happen when we ask for it. So, but just know that this was hard. Watching, I couldn't watch that video all the way through. It's hard, and we're going to do what we should do. Video is way different than looking at the photos that we've been seeing in the past. Now, this photo that's on this new sheet is real bad, but the video really is no, it's no worse. It's real time, and it hurts. It hurts. So just know that, yes, just know that we are saddened. We are saddened. I mean, we, this has been the conversation ever since the video came out amongst councilors. This has been the conversation, and we're going to do something about it.
Councilor Crabbe?
Mr. Mayor, the day that it was announced that these 12 dogs were going to be killed, I called you and you answered the phone, and we had a discussion about removing these dogs that were part of this court case out of CACC into another location, some property that's owned by the city or something, get them out of there because it was those dogs being in that facility that is creating an atmosphere that we're of euthanasia for other dogs for space. And we don't know how long that court case is going to last, so we need to find a permanent location for those dogs so that this, well, this isn't going to keep on happening after tonight, but we still need to do that so that we can be in compliance with the laws that we have, that we cannot have over a certain number of animals in that facility. And having all of those dogs taking up that space, it has, they have to be moved out. We have to do something with those dogs.
And the day that you and I talked, I spoke with Lisa Goodwin, Deputy City Manager Goodwin about, and the city manager, about finding a more permanent solution temporarily. And I know that they've looked at different options, and they've also looked at how we're going to hire the people that have to be there because the Department of Agriculture mandates a certain number of people that work there, any environment. So we are, we're looking for ways to try to handle that. But if I remember right, that day also, we ended up with a truck coming in with, I think, seven dogs. There was another one came in with a mother and a litter, so there were a lot of forces coming to bear on that, because soon as you and I talked, I had reached out to the city manager and to the deputy city manager.
Well, we need to, we need to have some urgency with this. I mean, this isn't something that, we, this isn't something we just, you know, like banter around, and it, we need to have something in place by the end of this week. I mean, we need to put that kind of urgency on this.
Councilor Kogel?
I think I might be the last one here, but I do, I do want to acknowledge that this is, that this is, this is much more than just the euthanasia of dogs and that one of the main parts of CACC is the role that our volunteers play in making this facility possible. I know that many times that I've been out there to visit, the volunteers are the ones that meet me in the parking lot or the ones that are answering my questions, and so I do want to make a note on any investigation that we do, in addition to the treatment of the dogs, is how we're treating our volunteers and the process in which we hire the volunteers or, it's been brought to my attention, ban volunteers, which I don't think is probably an appropriate thing if we're looking for help at this facility. So I do want to make note that we also address the volunteer situation, the dog situation, as well as our management situation.
All right. That's all the comments. Again, thank you all for...
Mr. Mayor, I do have something to say.
Yes, sir. Which city manager? It's on now.
Well, yeah, thank you.
Well, yeah, thank you. Let me just say that, Mayor, I think I was with you one day last week when we were verbally told about a video that was floating around, and I think the next day I finally got to see the video, and must admit that what I saw in the video did not look good. It was disturbing. And, and so that is why I directed the deputy city manager to do an investigation, because I wanted to see what that was all about. And, and so she has started that investigation, and I have no problem with an outside investigation, because what we want are the, the, the truth and facts, and, and that's what we work with. But staff did tell me just Monday that, that our, that veterinarian, Hank Hall, who is here tonight, made a, initiated a phone call to them, because he saw the video and, and made a visit to the CACC, and, and had a conversation with staff. And I've asked staff to share with you a letter that he sent to us just this, late this afternoon, but he is here, and I want him to approach the mic and, and share with us, you saw the video, Mr. Hall, and would you please tell us your conversation with staff and, and what you saw in video? And, and staff, if you will, share with them the letter from our veterinarian of record, Hank Hall, share with members of council and the media, if you will.
And again, just a reminder, we, we, everybody was courteous for, for your comments. We just asked the same thing in return from Dr. Hall.
Mr. Hall, you, you.
I feel a lot like Daniel in The Lion's Den, okay?
And you have to speak into mic.
This is not, this is not a fun visit for, for anybody here. It's a very emotionally charged audience. It's an emotionally charged subject. I'd like to clear up a couple of things right off the bat. Basically, we keep hearing things, and let me just walk through some of my, my days. I work at Harris County Animal Control. I don't work there, I volunteer there. I live in Harris County. I average probably ten euthanases a week at home and at Harris County Humane Society. The protocol that I use is, and it did not show on, on the video that was given, because the chai, 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 was, chai, was given an injection prior to what the video picked up, trying to do an intravenous thing. That is an intramuscular general anesthetic that all dogs receive. I'm, I'm seeing a lot, please let me just, and not do all the naysaying. The dog, maybe I just address here. The dog in question, and the dogs that I do, I go to people's homes on a weekly basis and euthanize animals at their request. The protocol I use is an intramuscular injection that puts the dog under a general anesthetic, dog or cat. When the dog or cat is in a comfortable state of general anesthesia, not a local, like you go to the dentist and get a tooth fill, I'm talking about, he's out, there's no pain felt on that. And then I take him to the final step with a cardiac stick. I have been doing this for fifty years. I'm pretty damn good at it. A cardiac stick, you go right into the heart, and it stops them just like that, okay? It is a very humane way to do things. There are, there are multiple ways to do anesthesia, or to do euthanasia, going from intravenously to intra pair, to neally, intercardially, you name it. There are a bunch of different ways you can do that. We try to do the most expeditious thing in a, in an animal control situation that we're, that we're dealing with here. One thing that this, this was, one of the things was passed around was, and shown on the video, was the dog Shay laying in a, in a prone position. This is because this dog is under a general anesthetic. Let's take away some of the, the dog is under, the dog was under a general anesthetic. The dog was under a general anesthetic or would not continue to lay there, even though the dog was still breathing. This is not an exact science, trying to hit a vein on people. We've all been to the doctor, and the nurse, or the PA, or the doctor may even have trouble drawing your blood. It's not a, an easy thing to do on, on an animal. Dogs, cats, kittens. We used to train people in the medical field, because we would use dogs and cats to help them learn to get some, some proficiency in hitting a vein. The lady in question, I do not want her thrown under the bus. She is a very competent individual and a very caring individual. And the reason she dealt with Shay, because she could at least approach Shay. Shay was not a friendly dog at all, and I'm, I'm not going to allow those people to be thrown under the bus, because of, our advocates and our, our activists here are very emotional. We're all emotionally charged. I'm, I'm an animal owner. All the people I know have animals, and I won't, I just won't have them thrown under the bus in an unnecessary thing. That dog was under anesthesia. There's no suffering, there's no anguish, there's no crying out. I don't understand what that problem is with that. The other thing about, you don't want to do stuff, it's like when we had a good TNR program here in town, thanks to Tom and Stephanie Bryant. The more animals we got neutered, and the TNR trap neuter and, and release and, and return, we cut down on, on animal control accessions. We cut down on animal euthanases. And it goes far beyond the euthanasia, and it goes back to what we're hitting on slightly here, public education, programs like that, where we can avoid, instead of pulling them out of the river, we keep them from going in the river. So, when we have stuff like that, where, who disagrees with, one of the ladies up here said innocent dogs do not need to die. Who, who disagrees with that? Nobody disagrees with that. We're animal fans. We, we should not have to do that, but we do. The reality is, we live in a real world. We, what are we going to do with these guys? Everybody that speaks up here going to take ten dogs a week, take them home? What are you going to do with them? Build a bigger procedure, bigger, a bigger building? Warehouse these animals? We are understaffed at animal control as it is now, because we, we just don't have the room for them. Then what do you do? You keep adding on, you keep keeping them? What? Give me a solution. There's, I mean, euthanasia, and you go with the ones that are sickly, the ones that are deemed dangerous, or something like that? Obviously, you have to start with those, but there are plenty of dogs that, that could be worked with if we had the time, the space, the money, the people to do that. Nobody disagrees with that. But to bash these people here, these are, I know these people there, the, the, the little girl that did the procedure on, and caught on the, on the tape, like, and another point, she didn't drag this dog off into, they know where the cameras are. They were right out in front with it. This is stuff they have to do. And I'm actually glad that there's a, a couple of dogs in a, in a container like that. It should show the public, this is what happens. This is what ends up when, with the end result here. That's, that's part of that. As far as getting people to work there, animal control has always been considered the bad guys. You look at Paws, they're the guys in the white hat. Animal control are the ones out there enforcing the, the legislation and stuff like that, and they're the bad guys. It's just the way it is, and it always will be. I'm disappointed that Counselor Davis did not call me when something like that involving an anesthetic, or a, a general, general anesthesia and euthanasia, the reason you didn't get to be a vet, you, you could hit a curveball. I, I admire that. Also, I'm not going to let the profession get bashed because of false information. These guys are put under an anesthetic prior to the, they, they, the girl waited, she didn't wait long enough for the anesthesia to kick in. Evidence by, the dog, the dog is laying in a state of repose because of the general anesthetic, not from the euthanasia. This, I don't, I don't know. I'm not making it worse, I'm telling you the facts, folks here. It's a tough situation. Also, I am, I am very much part-time. I've been with a city like this for four years, because they couldn't get anybody else in. I don't care what kind of salary you offer a, a vet coming in, if he walks into a place like where there's that much activism and oversight on, on the part of the, the overall population, it's hard to get people to come and, and work there at, as, as employees at animal control, and it's even harder to attract a vet to come in and, and take over something like it, regardless of the salary. They'll always be a bad guy. I've been, I practiced for fifty years. I've got a pretty decent reputation, or had one until all this stuff. Now, you know, but who speaks for the animals? What happens if, if I walk out of this and say, I'm, I'm done with this stuff here? Then, good luck getting another vet in there, you, you shut down, is what you'll do, and your, your points are well taken, then we do need to do something. And I think the mayor and, and Counselor Davis are, are right on hiring a, a full-time veterinarian that can address all of this issue like that. Who, who doesn't want better care and control for our animals? We all do. We're all talking about the same thing, but when we get divisive like this, it's, it's crazy. It's, it just gets out of hand. So, I'm here to help, but, and open to anything, but I wanted to clarify a couple, also, one other thing, I, I don't like, I do a cardiac injection, not a cardiac stick, it's an injection of a lethal solution when they're under anesthesia. A cardiac stick came out in a previous administration, that was a way you could actually test to see if the animal's heart was still beating, if you could not hear it, if you could not feel it. In a kennel situation, which the noise is nearly always deafening, it's hard to hear in a stethoscope. A stethoscope, a stethoscope in this case should have been used, it, I don't know why it wasn't, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, let me thank our vet, I, I can't hear myself, but let me thank the vet for coming here tonight, and it's my understanding from, from staff, you initiated a call to them.
Yes, sir.
Because of the video you saw.
Exactly.
And you wanted to weigh in, because it was concerning to you.
Right.
And then you penned this letter, and, and sent it to us late this evening, before city council meeting, and you appeared here tonight. And so I do want to thank you for penning this letter and for appearing here at city council tonight, and, and, and just be clear that, you know, I welcome an investigation, because we all want to get to the truth through the facts. And, and so we'll, we'll see what comes out of the investigation, and, and we'll go from there, but thank you for being here.
I, I mean, I, I came here because I knew there'd be questions, and I'm putting myself out here, and most people, there's a lot of people in this room have my number, please call me. I'm, I'm an open book, but this, this is, this shouldn't be in this, this situation, I agree. No question.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Next up is Counselor Hickey.
Dr. Hall, I have a couple, a couple of questions for you. One of my first questions, sir, is, first of all, let me say I appreciate what you do. Thank you for your service and helping us out with the CACC. Have two questions. My first question is, the people that was doing the euthanasia on that particular day, do they have to be licensed, like you, and certified, like you, to be able to do that?
They don't have to be licensed or certified, they have to be trained, and they have been trained.
So, they don't have to be licensed or certified?
No, sir.
Okay. And my second question is, but you said they had to be trained on how to do it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Were they trained?
What is their training?
Were they trained to do it?
Where? I'm sorry, I'm just, they are, they are trained right there, by myself.
Okay, so you did train them yourself?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Secondly, it's my understanding that there's a location on site where the euthanasia can take place. Am I correct?
Yes, sir, it's a euthanasia room. Correct.
Okay, so why wasn't the animals taken back to that room for this procedure to be done?
A couple of reasons, and it's a great question. A couple of reasons. Number one, they had twelve euthanases to do that day, and sometimes it's a little bit easier to go and, instead of taking the animal back through the barking dogs and everything else, to get them back to the euthanasia room where it is quieter, sometimes it's easier to go ahead and institute, give that first injection of a general anesthetic, and let the dog start to get calm and get squared away. And they go under a general anesthetic, it's, sometimes you just make, they're already right there. Why transport them? Why put them on a gurney, or what, and take them back to a room? They're already right there. We can do them right there. Again, I want to point out, these people know where the cameras are. There was no attempt to hide anything. They're in a, in a front of a camera right there.
Well, which brings me back to this question. If they were trained by you, how, what other amount of training hours that each individual received from you to be qualified to carry out this type of function?
Several hours. I, we don't put a clock on it like that. What I teach them and what they need to do is, is how to hit a vein, how to draw, get in, make sure they're in a vein, how to give a, a safe injection as painlessly as possible, how to protect themselves, how to protect the dog, this type of thing. There's a, there's a lot of moving parts that go along with that. These, it's not like us, we go in and give blood, we stick our hand out, and we're, these dogs, you're coming at them with a needle, you, most of them you have to muzzle. This same dog lunged at several people, not throwing the dog under the bus, he, he shouldn't have even been there. It's that we have a people problem, not an animal control problem. We have a people control problem. I'm with the, I'm with these activists here. I, I'm not trying to go against these people. I, I don't like the way they approach it, because now it is so much tougher to hire somebody for animal control, hire a vet, hire somebody to come down and work for animal control. Sure, and go out and check your tires every day to make sure somebody didn't let the air out of them, or something like that. I mean, come on, we live in a, in a strange time, and I'm passionate about this, that's why I even do it. My wife wanted me to quit a year ago, and not do this. I'm retired. I've been retired for seven years, but who speaks for these animals? I know you, you guys speak for these animals. Who speaks for the ones that are incarcerated down there and, and stuck in animal control? We'd love to have an empty, I see pictures on Facebook where kennels all over the Humane Societies and animal control facilities are empty. They're, they've emptied out. We would love that. Unfortunately, we live in an area where we, sixty or eighty percent of our population are pit bull, pit, pit bull mix and stuff like that. Dogs that don't have a great reputation are not that adopter, they're not the fluffy, cutesy ones like that.
Thank you.
Sir. What else?
Oh, I'm trying to.
Thank you.
I think Counselor Crabbe had a question.
Trying to get there. She's not in, next in line. Counselor Davis was next.
Well, Dr. Hall, I know, after you've watched the videos and all, I know you know why we got to call for an independent investigation.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Look, we know that these things, from all the research I've read, it need, it doesn't need to be done out in the open like that amongst all the animals. I think it's very clear on the protocol. I also noticed some things, too. You mentioned about, you know, some of the, the way matters were administered, but I'm sure you would say, too, that when you do it by the vein, the animal can go down quickly and quietly and be put to sleep. That way, as well as you do with a heart sick. Now, I would have preferred you have been there, based on your testimony, that you could have done it and done it appropriately, but that animal was not unconscious. I mean, that animal was conscious. That animal was moving around. That animal was alive for several hours. Not hours, excuse me, minutes.
In the first, the first part of that video, the animal was active and moving. They were trying to go too soon.
I'm just saying, we need to understand that, and like I said, maybe it would have been more appropriate to the procedure if you were there and you'd done that. I don't know if they called, if they called you, did they call you to get the approval to go ahead and to do that type procedure?
Yes, sir.
So, that was done at the shelter?
Yes, sir.
It was decided to be done at the shelter.
Right.
It's just unfortunate that, it's not unfortunate, but that's why we have the video camera, all these new systems we have, so we can kind of have transparency and be able to see what's happening. But regardless of how it took place, it's like I said, there were some things that were inappropriate and unnecessary, and it didn't go according to how it's supposed to go, to how it was explained. And that was my point. When you mentioned my name, that was the point I was making.
Yes, sir.
And that is clear, and we need to understand that.
Absolutely, and they were taken.
The law is clear, and the procedures, whether it's the Veterinary Association, Humane Society of the United States, or others. Humane Society of the United States, or others, it's very clear on the protocol.
Right.
So, I just wanted to make that point. That's why I said it bothered me.
Sure. And as it bothers me as well. My point is still, the anesthetic, general anesthetic was administered in the dog's kennel, and the dog was approached too rapidly. The anesthetic had not had a chance to take in effect. They tried, and he was struggling. The girl said, oh, no, not working. Let him relax. And then when he went over and she sat with the dog, and then he became more under the influence of the anesthetic. And the actual thing that put him out was the introduction of the euthanasia solution intravenously. In her letter, there's, she has written, the person has already started the investigation, she has written a letter to Mr. Hughley and stated exactly that, that she finally was able to get a vein. That's what put the dog finally out. But he was under a state and plane of general anesthetic when that happened.
Well, I'll get back to you. Unfortunately, I can't jump people on this system. So Counselor, I understand, I understand that. You turned your life. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you for being here, Dr. Hall. I know that this can be uncomfortable for you, but so, were you called and told that there were going to be 12 animals put down on that, on that day?
No, ma'am. The number that is put down, I have nothing to do with the protocol of choosing who gets put down, or unfortunately, no, ma'am, I have no input in that and never know from day to day, you know, who is on that list, or how many vaccines we have to give. I go out there usually Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. I go out there many different times, called in for other things, not this particular instance, no, ma'am. But also, it doesn't account for the phone calls I get during the week, any day or night. This is all, has been presented, what do we need to do? So I'm in constant contact with them, but not in this particular instance. I did not find out about it until the next day.
So this letter is based, just based off of you watching the video, that you were able to say that there was the youth, you know, that the sedative was administered properly and, you know, all these actions were taken? That is just what you got from what source? The video and then the, what people are saying that were on the scene?
From the people that actually do the euthanases out there that I have trained, the three people that.
The three people that falsified the report?
The young lady that is shown most in the video, they had drawn up, they thought enough solution, enough of the anesthetic agent and administered, it was the last, like two cc's of the bottle. It should have been three or four. So instead of making up more of the general anesthetic, they were hoping that would be enough to do it. And when they got the dog out to the initial time with the dog, where they were trying to get a vein, where there's two of them working, one holding and one trying to administer the intravenous solution, that, they said, no, no, he's not ready yet.
Were those the steps that you trained them to do, to take?
No, ma'am. There were several missteps here, correctly noted. There should have been, back in a euthanasia, the euthanasia room, that should have been done. We've cleared that, I talked to them about that. There's never going to be another one that I'm associated with that's not done in a euthanasia room. The, when the dog, the dog should be totally under a general anesthetic before any attempt at an intravenous injection is made. There should only be need for one person even to push a euthanasia solution into a dog under general anesthetic.
On this code that you provided for us in this packet, on A number three, it says, if the dog or cat is unconscious, intracardial injection by hypodermic needle, would you consider that dog was unconscious when they put that hypodermic needle into its heart?
He was, absolutely. He was, you look at the pictures in the video, as horrible as the video may seem, the dog is lying in a complete state of general anesthetic. He is not moving.
Is there a difference between general anesthetic and unconscious?
Probably not. I mean, unconscious, somebody can be knocked out and not feel something for a minute or two. I mean, kind of almost a splitting here, but.
Because I've been under general anesthesia.
General, I'm talking about general anesthesia.
But I've been conscious. I gave birth that way.
I've never given birth, so I can't address that, but the.
Well, I've given birth three times.
A general anesthesia.
Under general anesthesia, but not unconscious. I was fully conscious the whole time, so.
I'm just, I'm.
I consider it, there's a big difference between being unconscious and under general anesthesia.
I'm addressing general anesthesia.
Ms. Selim, please allow them to speak, please. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. No, ma'am. Is that all, Counselor?
Well, it also says in number G that no dog or cat may be left unattended between the time euthanasia procedures are first begun and the time death occurs, nor may its body be disposed of until it's confirmed, is confirmed by a qualified person. But that didn't happen in the video?
The people are qualified to attest to death. There was not, the procedures were not followed like they should have been with a stethoscope, even putting your hand and squeezing the chest for a heartbeat, something like that. So that did not happen. That's correct. That was out of character for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, Counselor Davis, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Dr. Hall, I just want, you know, you said earlier about some of the things, the comments I made, I think in the very testimony you're giving here, then the words I used, uncalled for, inappropriate, unnecessary, yes, those are appropriate words. I mean, and you basically echoed them tonight. Some things went wrong, okay? And I don't want to cast dispersions or anything like that. I just know what I saw, but ultimately, that's why we're trying to get it all put down on paper, do it in investigation and understand it. And I will just say that over the years, I know that, I don't know you personally, but I think that you've helped a lot of animals in many, many ways. And I think you do some things that might not be acceptable to many, and it's not, like you said, it's not easy, and it's certainly not a lot of people want to do that, but you know, you're in a field that is a. It's.
Goes with the territory, unfortunately.
You know what? I was about to say that. There's a lot of stuff that goes with the territory, but you know, I don't want to sit here and, I just, we got questions that need to be answered, okay? And I think that there'll be plenty of time for people to give their statements and interviews. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I think that's all.
Again, Dr. Hall, I think those, you've answered the questions. Thank you for coming today.
Thanks, sir.
I'm not against what's been said here tonight. There needs to be changes.
All right. We'll move on now to the city manager's agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a.
Well, for what, sir? That's already been covered, I think, in Counselor Tucker, Thomas. Who? Yeah. I think we, I thought we did, maybe we didn't. Sandra, did we have a vote on that motion? Investigation, yes. We did. That's what I thought. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a few items. First, I have an easement abandonment at 1024 Timber Creek Way.
Motion second to approve item one. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Or that's approved?
I've got a Georgia Bureau of Investigation MOU to lease space for game task force.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on the GBI MOU? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I've got a, an MOU with the medical center doing business as Piedmont Columbus Regional to meet the eligibility requirement to buy discounted outpatient drugs.
All right, we have a motion second to approve item three. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Got Georgia Medicaid fee for service, ground ambulance, upper payment limit.
All right, there's a motion second to approve item four on the city manager's agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
And Mayor, I've got the public defender contract for FY25. Those who have been on council know that this comes every year. And.
All right. Motion second to approve item five, the public defender contract. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Item six thirteen.
All right, there's a motion to approve items six through 10 on the city manager's agenda. Are there any of those that someone would like pulled? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
This quick claim D for 5013, 13th Avenue, it's with Columbus Housing Initiative, fulfilling the obligations contained in the security deed that we did with them. Variance to waive permit fees. With the airport, they've got $11,000 in fees for the runway project that they're doing. You know, this was a T O project, and they're moving forward with that project. They are a component unit, if you will, of the city government, and it's to waive those fees. I've got body worn camera policy and implementation program for the Sheriff Department, and then an adoption of the 2024 to 2029 hazard mitigation plan, and we have to have this mitigation plan in order to get FEMA grants and so forth. I've got risk and safety day donations. We did this last year at Lake Bottom. It was a success. It's through the risk management department. It's where various city departments will be on site, doing things like water safety, fire safety, pedestrian crossing, bus safety, and so forth, and that's to use, receive donations for that. I've got a few purchases.
Second.
Got change order, I'm sorry. Don't tell all of his business. I've got purchases. First, a change order two, Warstrange Road covert project. It's $26,441 for the Warstrange Road covert. Asking your approval.
Did we, didn't we move items A through F?
Oh, sorry, they made a motion. Okay.
Does any items A through F, any of them need to be pulled? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Next, well, then.
Updates. Yeah, if you go through them, yeah. Go through them. You'll go through them.
So I was just mentioning, B was the Baker Center driveway project, C, bus route sands and poles, D, Dodge Chargers for Musco County Prison, E, declaration of surplus and donations of three vehicles to Uptown Columbus, and then F, vehicles for the sheriff's office. It's 24 vehicles, $1.1 million for the sheriff's office. And then we did do an emergency purchase for them. They had to pay for some media buy with WRBL and WTVM. Those are the purchases, Mayor and Council. I did add the finance update. We gave you a copy at the last meeting. If you want that finance update, we can try, we can do it quickly, or we can, since you already have a copy and you've had for a week, we can pass on it. What is your wish?
Delay it.
Okay. We'll maybe get it in, maybe next week. But Mayor, with that, that concludes my agenda.
Okay.
Assistant city attorney, could you please look at the procurement process? We all know that inflation is real, and our threshold is sort of low compared to some of the surrounding counties and counties considerable to our size, just like Macon Bibb. I think theirs is 2,500 for small purchases, and then they have, I think it's 25, informal process for 2,500, but under 50,000. And then they request quotes as well. But if you could look into that and bring it back, that way we can possibly look at updating our purchasing process to kind of come up with the times, because things do cost way more now. Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Counselor Davis?
Yes, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to ask you if you would put together a welcome meeting, an introductory meeting of the Community Healthcare Fund Group. I would like to ask Council if they would, Potts Barnes, Counselor Barnes was a part of that, if we could add Byron Hickey on that committee and Counselor Hoagle on that, Cogle on that committee as well. But if you would contact the consultants and ask them if they can come and do a welcome introduction with us, so we can have that conversation?
Sure.
All right. I think that's all the lights. So we'll move on to the clerk of council's agenda, and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Davis? Yeah, one and two, we've already covered.
Yes, sir. Thank you. For the clerk's agenda, items one and two have already been addressed. Item three is an honorary designation application. This was submitted by Jason Crowsum and Stephanie Callahan for a plaque and memorial bench in honor of Mr. Richard Callahan at the Godwin Creek Golf Course. This was considered by the Board of Honor at the July 3 meeting, and their recommendation was for denial. So I was just submitting this for Council to receive the application.
Motion second received, correspondence, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Item number four is an email correspondence from Mr. Dallas Copeland. He's resigning from his seat on the Development Authority, needs to be received.
Motion second received, a letter from Mr. Copeland. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Item five, this is a new honorary designation application. This was.
Motion second received, a letter from Mr. Copeland, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
Item five, this is a new honorary designation application. This was submitted by the Deputy Chief of Police Herman Miles to name the Public Safety Building in honor of former police chief William Jim Wetherington. The council may vote to submit to the Board, Board of Honor.
May it be submitted to the Board of Honor? Motion second to forward it on to the Board of Honor, all in favor, say aye? Any, any opposed? Alright.
Item number six, these are minutes of various boards, we received.
Motion received.
Motion and a second to reserve the minutes, uh, are there any of those that anybody'd like pulled? Alright, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? They're received.
Next, we have board appointments, we have the mayor's appointments, uh, the Columbus Sound Works Convention and Trade Center Authority, the seat of Jessica Ferret, Ferretta and S. Carson Cummings. Ms. Ferretta is eligible to serve another term, we're just waiting to hear back to see if she's interested, Mr. Mayor.
If she wants to continue, we'll, we'll go ahead and put her back on and I'll get you somebody for Mr. Cummings.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, did you say she is interested?
No, 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 if she is interested, let's, let's re, reappoint her and I will get somebody to cover Mr. Cummings.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have council district seat appointments, any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Youth Advisory Council, we still have District one, two and five that are open for nominations. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation, the Animal Control Advisory Board, Ms. Paige Shield was nominated to succeed Ms. Sabine Stoll as the Animal Rescue Representative and she may be confirmed.
There's a motion second to confirm, uh, all in favor, please say aye? Are there any opposed?
Also for the Animal Control Advisory Board, Ms. Claire Anna Daniels was nominated to succeed Ms. Julie Friar, she may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Daniels, uh, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? She's confirmed.
For the Board of Honor, Mr. Wayne Anthony was nominated to fill...
Motion to confirm Wayne Anthony, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
For the Land Bank Authority, Ms. Tamika Farley was nominated to fill the expired term.
Alright, motion second to, uh, confirm Ms. Farley, all in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? She is confirmed.
Next, we have a council appointment, uh, vote tabulation may be determined. For the Development Authority, we do have two seats that are vacant and are open for nominations, we have, um, reopened those nominations, so if council would, I will start with the seat of Travis Chambers, uh, Counselor Chambers, are there any nominations for this seat? Counselor Tucker has nominated Audrey Tillman. Counselor Chambers has nominated Mr. Carl Douglas as well, are there any nom, any other nominations for this seat?
Yes.
Let me just go ahead?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, I nominated Gerald Miley to, uh, to fill the seat, actually it was Dee Copeland, but now it would be Travis Chambers, but look, my, uh, my candidate, uh, would like to, uh, withdraw and he has the utmost respect for Audrey Tillman, he thinks she's a tremendous candidate with her experience, background, knowledge and contacts and, uh, that's the kind of people we need on Development Authority. He wants to, uh, the council to know that he's in full support of that, I'm in full support of Audrey Tillman as well, so I remove, uh, withdraw his name from, uh, from that, uh, position.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Davis. Are there any further nominations for the seat of Travis Chambers? Mr. Mayor, that nomination is closed, is council prepared to take a vote? Mayor Pro Tim Allen.
Audrey Tillman.
Chambers. Crab.
Audrey Tillman.
Counselor Cogle.
Tillman.
Counselor Davis.
Audrey Tillman.
Counselor Garrett.
Tillman.
Counselor Hickey.
Tillman.
Counselor Huff.
Tillman.
Counselor Thomas.
Tillman.
Counselor Tucker. Ms. Tillman has nine, she may be confirmed.
Move confirmation. Motion second to confirm Ms. Tillman, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
She is approved. I think council...
It's on, but, uh, I, I would like to add to the council, the, my candidate said that if another seat comes open, that he would, uh, appreciate it if you would reconsider him, thank you.
Just...
I'm sorry.
You like, yeah. You're, you're on.
Just for the record, I am perfectly fine, uh, with both, um, Franklin Douglas and Audrey Tillman, so, um, I think either choice is a good choice, thank you.
Alright, thanks, sir.
Okay, for the next seat, Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. Dallas Copeland, are there any nominations for this seat?
I'd like to nominate Doug Jenkins, he's the, uh, local regional director for Georgia Power and for years we have had the, the executive director for Georgia Power as a part of this committee and I think it's, I think it's, there's good, good move for us to put this back on there. Thank you, council.
Mayor Pro Tim Allen has nominated Doug Jenkins, are there any further nominations? Hearing now, Mr. Mayor, we may move confirmation of Doug Jenkins.
Second. Motion second to confirm Mr. Jenkins, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed?
Thank you. Next, we have council appointments, any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. For the Animal Control Advisory Board, we have the seat of Shannon Emery, she is not eligible to serve another term. For the Board of Honor, we have the seat of Judge Bobby Peters and Barbara Pierce, both are interested in serving another term if anyone wanted to place their name in nomination. Counselor Huff has placed both in nomination, we'll bring these back for confirmation at the next meeting. We also have Vivian Creighton Bishop, uh, we have not been able to determine if she is interested in serving, but did you want to place her name in nomination and we'll bring this back and in the meantime, we will double check, uh, with her to make sure she's interested in continuing to serve. Counselor Huff has renominated, uh, Ms. Bishop. Next, we have the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we have the seat of William Bandi, uh, he was not seeking reappointment, this is, this seat is open for nominations. Next, the Uptown Facade Board, we have the seat of Liba Dillon and Nikki Giedrock, uh, these are, uh, seats slated for a particular organization and we are in contact to, uh, check to see if the organization is willing to place their name in nomination again. We also have the seat of James Lewis, Debbie Young and Hannah Israel and, uh, once again, we'll bring these back once we have a recommendation from the appropriate organization. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, um, there's also one council hearing and I would just ask that the, uh, city attorney facilitate that. It's a request for waiver of penalty and interest for hotel motel excise tax, uh, as submitted by Mr. Anil Patel, representing, uh, Candlewood Suites Northeast in Columbus, Georgia.
And I'm, I'm told by our city attorney that we don't have the authority to, um, rebate those items, there you go.
Yeah, the, um, section nineteen dash one twenty of the code, there is no authority for you to waive a penalty or interest on a hotel tax, you can give a credit to someone if that has overpaid for the next year's tax, but that's all you can do under the ordinance, this is not, uh, the same as state law, evol or on property tax where you can waive penalty and interest, uh, you don't have the authority to do it and then you've got the July twenty-third report from Angelica Alexander, you should have that at the table where it was, uh, postmarked after April twentieth for the March reporting period. That's really our comment.
Is, uh, is Mr. Patel here? Let's see him. But then, well, the, the, the option exists for them to give a, sort of a discount on the next year for the hotel motel if, if they find that he has overpaid.
If they find an overpayment, they can give a credit for next year's tax, but we don't know that there was any overpayment.
Okay. Well, I wonder if we should wait until Mr. Patel is here and present? Yeah. Yeah, we'll just, uh, we'll, we'll get, uh, we'll reach out to Mr. Patel, make sure he's aware of what his options are and they are fairly limited right now, so...
Mr. Mayor, I did want to go back to the Youth Advisory Council, uh, Counselor Davis is nominating Libby Coleman for the District two seat and she may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm Ms. Coleman, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, good, she's...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Where we going executive session? Well, we do have a couple of people that have a couple of, uh, three minutes left, so before we go into executive session, we will, uh, circle back to them and try to keep tabs on anything, I mean, I think Ms. Elamine was the first, uh, individual that wanted three minutes and I'll remind you that the three minutes need to be associated with the topic you were speaking on when you came in for the first five, Ms. Elamine.
Well, in general, I have to say, Mr. Mayor, uh, that these issues are about leadership and I can't not say that, uh, when you do nothing, you build a movement, you build a movement around animal control, it's the top story of the meeting, but on my issue of affordable housing, Pat Frey and I are meeting on Thursday ahead of the work session, Mr. City Manager, uh, because I will give her the box of two hundred and twenty pages of disposessories file donated by Staples, cause when people in the community see what's going on here with certain realtors dispossessing or attempting to dispossess when they are really slum lords, people want to help, so, uh, hundreds of dollars worth of copies donated so I can give Pat Frey her box of two hundred and twenty pages so she can see what's going on. I'll see you next week, hope the work session on the unhoused will still happen, Mr. City Manager, and I'll call you about a little bit more detail about what's going on, cause it's not good, it's not good, good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, um, Ms. Johnson, I think you were next.
Okay, I just want to touch on a couple of things, um, related to what we, what we've been talking about, um, somebody had commented about a one million dollar budget for animal control and, um, one thing that we have said over and over and over again is it's not the money, it's the people, you, there are examples of people across the country on a shoestring budget that are doing so much with that because when they are, start doing what they're doing, the whole community sees it and they want to become involved and all the people like us that are, have spent our time get, digging up records in those communities, they're out there helping the shelter and so that's one, it's, um, there's so many things that we've come up here and talked about, about money being misspent or where it could have been better spent, one of those is, um, relates to a comment that Dr. Hall said, which is it's hard to get employees and we've actually requested the applications for a lot of these jobs, including one that has sat open for eight months where the Director of CACC claims that she can't get anybody...
So, did you answer the question that she asked or is that not for public knowledge about the administrative leave?
I think that was just put in a motion to, today and it wasn't identifying.
Okay.
It would be the investigation and we'll bring the findings of the investigation back and at that particular time...
Okay, you got it, girls? No?
Wasn't what I understood.
Is my time started?
Yes, you have.
Oh, that's not good. Okay, I had to rewrite everything I had because you all have already answered most of the, um, questions that I had, well, some of them. The main issue contributing to animal overpopulation is the failure of citizens to spay and neuter their pets, I believe this wholeheartedly. It surprises me that there isn't a law in Columbus requiring every animal adopted from CAC to be spayed or neutered before leaving the facility. The current practice of simply providing a certificate and asking adopters to arrange the procedure themselves is not effective. I think Mr. Davis asked where, where are all the dogs coming from or others from other counties dumping the dogs? Dogs can have puppies every six days, I mean, this is a huge thing, so without follow-up, there's no guarantee that this overpopulation will decrease or stop. Both stray and own dogs in our community are producing more puppies than can be managed, even with the fully staffed CAC, which currently isn't fully staffed, the number of dogs coming in is overwhelming, leading to the use of euthanasia. We are here for the, the voiceless, we do not want the actions of the videos repeated. CAC needs to be removed from under public works and I feel that a new director is needed and that director needs to be a compassionate person with business skills like marketing and getting the dogs put on the website, understanding how to maintain a budget and willing to seek new ideas and one that will build a family of workers that act like a team and a family at CACC. Myla being taken from his owner, inhumane euthanization, volunteers that are worn out and rescues that do not work with CAC, when the relationship with, with, uh, Paws Humane and all the other rescues two years ago were, were great. I think we need to get back to looking at helping the rescues build faith in what's there at CACC and I'd also like to, um, ask that, uh, privatization be considered, I know that there was a, a order or a request put forward years ago about privatizing, um, CACC, Paws Humane was supposed to get the contract and at the last hour, something happened. I don't know how to find out what the answers are to that, I don't know if that was done in executive session, but that could be one opportunity that could be taken to relieve more stress off the city. We pay others to manage our trash, we pay them to manage our recycling, it's just a thought, so I thank you again for listening this evening and, um, I spoke to Walker Garrett earlier, well, yesterday and, um, Walker and maybe even Mr. Davis, I'm going to look forward to trying to get with you about putting that law into place that all animals must be spayed and neutered before they leave that facility.
Just making...
Let's stop the insanity and stop the problem.
Thank you. Uh, Ken, Mayor Pro Tim.
The, uh, the issue of mandatory spay and neutering, I've been talking with the Director, Drell Short, for several weeks and they are in favor of, of mandatory spay and neutering. The problem we're at now, uh, well, let me first say, Mr. City Attorney, would you begin drafting, uh, mandatory spay and neuter ordinance that we could pass? Um, and it, the, the problem we have today is we don't have anyone on board that can implement that, we don't have the proper staff to do that now, the, the person that's trained in, in those, those, both of those areas, so we could, we could pass it today or next week or next month, but we still got to wait till we have somebody on board that can handle that, uh, but anyway, I would like to ask for you to go ahead and start drafting that, that ordinance for us.
Right, and currently, any animal that comes through the facility or is adopted out from the facility is already supposed to be spayed or neutered.
Well, no, it's, it's an option, base, it's, it's, it's the option of the person adopting...
You get a certificate.
You get a, you get a credit, yeah, you get a credit, but they're, they're not, they're not doing it. They're not doing it.
So, it says it in the code and we're not doing it?
No, the, you, you, the person adopting the animal gets a, gets a credit to, a voucher, whatever, they get a voucher to go have it spayed or neutered and they're not doing it, they're not following it.
The vet's supposed to do it and report it back.
There's no teeth in the ordinance to require them to do it, so...
There's no teeth in the ordinance to require them to do it, so they don't, they, there's nothing there. So anyways- Should be done before they leave, though, so. That's, yeah, that's the, that's what we need to be done. All right. Thank you. City- Counselor Davis?
Yeah, ma'am, I agree with you. There are so many, look, animals suffer because, let's face it, the responsibilities of human beings, and for several years, we sent legislation from here on our wish list. I worked with the former Director of PAWS to stop puppy milling in the state of Georgia, and we sent action up there, but that's all we can do. We've done it for several years. I don't mind sending it back up again, or anything else that we need to do that can make a difference, but, you know, there's so much, so little time and so many things to cover here, you know, but, uh, adoption, whatever we can do in those areas, whatever, this, this dogfighting stuff and all, we, we got to really start cracking down on that kind of stuff. We really do. There's a lot of things that I said we could do. I can't touch on all of them, but we can start doing little things here and there. I don't mind taking that journey with you, and I do know that, that we're bound, there's several things. Again, I say we're bound, you know, I go to the City Attorney and says you can't do that, because state law says you can't do that in the state of Georgia. I don't understand all those regulations and things, but I do know sometimes I'm up against the wall and trying to make progress, and, and there are some things that we're continuing to work on that I think is going to make a, a difference, a continuing difference, but, um, somebody said it earlier, Ms. Wu, you said it, working together. I believe you said that, together, working together. Look, we don't do that. I've said it before. You've heard me say it before. Who suffers? I mean, the animals suffer, because we can't, we can't get it right. We need to figure out how to improve our relationships and work together, and that's, that's how we make a difference, so. And we appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cogle?
So, in the, in the ordinance, um, does it, can you, can you clarify whether or not, let me backtrack. So, uh, so, for example, I adopted a dog. It was unaltered. I got a voucher in the ma- or I got a voucher that said I could go to PAWS or whatever for animal control, and I ran a little bit of an experiment. He's been altered, so remain calm. But, um, I did not hand in that voucher, and then, three months later, received a note in the mail from Animal Control saying that I was not in accordance with the ordinance, and then that I needed to bring back my, uh, paperwork to Animal Control, or I would be in violation of the ordinance. So, but, is there, what is, can you clarify what would happen if I was in vi- violation of the ordinance? Because I, because I did not turn back in, because I wanted to see what would happen if somebody would actually come and knock on my door, but they have not, so.
So they didn't have evidence that you had it?
They, they do not have evidence. Uh, he has been altered, for the, for the record. The dog has been altered, okay? It would be a disaster if he was not-
That's probably what, what it was.
Right, but, but-
They traced it by looking to see which vouchers had been using for, had been used-
Right, no, but, no, I'm saying that if, uh, they, someone should have come to either visited me and told me that I was, I was not in compliance with the ordinance, or I should have gotten a fine in the mail. But either way, uh, like, it's not, we're not following through. So I'm, my cure, my question is, what is in the ordinance that I would be responsible for if my dog was not altered? If I ignored it, if I continued to ignore it? Okay.
For violation of city ordinance?
Okay.
For the judge to determine.
I'll drop it off.
Fine.
But, 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 the, I mean, the fact remains is that we're just not enforcing the ordinances that are in place. That's, that's the, that's my point, is that we have, we have a spay and or, uh, neuter ordinance in place. We just don't enforce it. So either they, like Counselor Allen said, either we need to spay and neuter before they exit the facility, or we need to follow up in a timely manner on the animals that are leaving.
Yep.
I mean, with the same thing with the registration of animals for their rabies vaccine, you know?
Exactly. But they get a rabies vaccination upon, don't they? Or if they're supposed
All right. We've got, uh, we need to go into executive session to dis- To discuss, uh, litigation and real estate. Personnel and personnel. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in executive session. All right, we are, um, we had been in executive session where we discussed, uh, property, uh, litigation and personnel. There were no votes taken. Motion adjourned. Motion second to adjourn a regular meeting. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.